It is two minutes after three. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Burnt?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Mayor DeVeard?
Here. Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Second.
A motion is second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item four, consent agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
No changes noted on the consent. I move that we approve it. Mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
A motion is second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, most secured. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. Item six A is under the Meridian Development Corporation, our quarterly meeting, and I'll turn this over to Ashley. Thank you for joining us, Ashley.
Happy New Year, everyone. For the record, Ashley Squires, Administrator for Meridian Development Corporation. My address is 104 East Fairview Avenue, 239 Meridian. And in your packet, you should have a summary of October to December 2018 activities. Sorry about that.
(laughing).
In your packet, you should have the activities of our agency from October to December. And I think most of you are probably pretty well in the know as to what we've been up to in terms of the Old City Hall block. You did receive some kickoff meeting notes right before the holiday from us, so as you can see, we are on track with that project. In addition to a really outstanding update on the nine-mile floodplain, one thing that I didn't note in our report is that our agency did undergo its fiscal year 18 audit in November, and we were deemed clean. And so you will see that audit attached to our annual report in April. I'm hoping you'll take a little bit of pity on me today. I've been fighting a little bit of an infection and my throat is a little straggly, so I didn't plan on talking a whole lot today, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have on anything that we've reported on in the written report in your packets.
Thank you, Ashley. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Little Roberts?
Madam Mayor, Ashley, first of all, thank you. I know that you've been getting a lot done, and it's greatly appreciated. I noted that you said there was a change with the Union Pacific rep, and I just wondered your opinion if you thought that was going to slow things down regarding the parking potential space?
(laughing) Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Roberts, you know, I don't think it can go any slower than it already has been, unfortunately.
Yes, it could.
(laughing).
Don't say that.
Knock on wood. We've had an application in since February. When I did speak to the representative in December, he was just coming on board, so I repackaged everything and all the communications we had had to date and sent to him directly. I'm going to give him it through the end of this week, and if I don't hear from him, I'm hoping to schedule a conference call next week with him to be able to kind of figure out where he is, what he's thinking. We do know that he is communicating with another property owner in our district right now, so we do know he is jumping in and getting his feet wet. So I'm hoping that we are going to be able to get an action plan in place to be able to move forward as quickly as possible. He knows that we have budget, he knows that we have interest, and he seemed very receptive to working with us. So, fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you so much.
Item six B is under a Solid Waste Advisory Commission, and we have our chair here. Welcome, Steve.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I am Steve Corey, Chairman of the Solid Waste Advisory Commission, and I'm here at their request. I have with me here Brett Branco of the Meridian Police Department. We'll be discussing the Trash or Treasure Program we do on an annual basis. If you remember, that's something that Brett became familiar with when he was attending the services for his brother-in-law, and he has helped us by bringing it back to Meridian and giving us a unique event that is Meridian's and is not repeated elsewhere in the valley. We're at that time where we are starting to look at the 2019 Trash or Treasures Program. As you remember, it's set up to run right before the spring cleanup, unlimited spring cleanup. The unlimited spring cleanup for our residents would be between May 6th and May 10th this year. So what we're talking about is an event that would be just immediately before that time. If you remember, we've mentioned before that we are ready to go ahead and take this program citywide, and that's what I wanted to go ahead and check and see is if council was still comfortable with that plan. We expect with some posting of some more educational materials that this is going to become less of an activity for the Solid Waste Advisory Commission and staff and become something that's more owned by the citizens of Meridian, and they'll have the tools to be able to participate directly without as much prep work as we've done recently. We do intend to go ahead and put together the materials explaining this, an extensive outreach activity. We are planning to do billing inserts, information on Republic's and the city's websites, and information on the city's social media sites. It will, even so, we can expect this year that there'll be a need for someone to be able to take phone calls because there will be more questions. And so with that, we realize that we're going to need a little bit of city staff. That would include Shandy over in Public Works, probably Casey Emery, and also David Miles in Public Works. And with that, I would like to kind of find out if the council has any questions or concerns about our initiating this activity.
Counsel, any questions, comments, or concerns?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
No concerns, no questions. I mean, I guess, only question, I guess, is maybe before the mayor in terms of staffing resources, that are they available to meet the needs of this program?
I guess in the marketing realm, I think we can certainly address those. I think that the pilot has brought to light a couple of concerns, and how long do you leave things out? When are they going to get picked up? And that seemed to be a frequent question last year, is, okay, I think the program is over, when is someone going to come and pick up what other people haven't taken? And had that been addressed and discussed in SWAC?
We know that each portion of the city has their assigned day that the material will be picked up between May 6th and May 10th. So the question really kind of comes as to when would the homeowners' associations and/or citizens want, how much before that would they want to have things out? Maybe the ones that are on Monday would do what we've done in the past, which is to have it out on the weekend, but the ones that are later in the week, say they've got a Thursday pickup, maybe they're only putting it out on the curb on Tuesday and Wednesday. If it's still there on Thursday, it gets picked up and it's gone. So that detail, I'm going to have to leave to Brett. Brett is the subcommittee chair, and he'll want to figure out how to adjust the wording to match that. But it does lead to an issue that I have not mentioned at that point, which is our current ordinance is something can only sit on the curb for 24 hours. So probably we need to go ahead and have an exemption during that week where material could stay on for two or three days before it's picked up and removed, as a suggestion to council for consideration. But I believe that will address the issue. I suppose it's quite possible some homeowners' associations would be comfortable with the material being placed on Saturday and not picked up until Thursday, but I don't know of many homeowners' associations that would endorse that.
Yeah, Brett, do you have anything that you'd like to add, or Dave Miles?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
And I know that, you know, anytime there's a new program or something that's new to people, there's going to be some confusion, and so I don't think there's any way to eliminate that altogether. I do feel, however, though, going citywide with the program allows us to market much more extensively, maybe starting earlier, you know, hopefully educating people as much as possible so that when the time comes, they understand how the program works. But it is going to be the first year for most of the neighborhoods in Meridian, and so I'm sure there will be some people that are confused, and there's going to be a learning curve. I don't think there's anything that we've done about that, other than, you know, really educating people as much as possible before the event happens. I don't think that there will be any confusion or events that are going to be so bad that we shouldn't do the program. I mean, oops, nobody picked up my trash, and they'll come back and get it, or, you know. It's all pretty minor in the scheme of things.
I'll ask Dave first a few comments, and then...
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As staff, we did meet internally with Republic Services and the SWAC chair, and Councilmember Mylum sort of touches right on it, and that we do predict or expect that there will be some challenge for communication, but we do have the resources between Republic Services and our staff that we think we can communicate this well with SWAC and with the subcommittee membership to the community. It is a learning curve, though. You're talking about, I'm not sure how many communities we did in the past two years, but you're talking about going from roughly a few subdivisions to every subdivision. So there has to be an expectation that there will be a communication that has to be done, and that hopefully that message gets heard and conveyed to everyone and by everyone, but there's always room for interpretation and messaging. Some of the other aspects that we talked about is Republic Services is committed to picking up the material, so that's good to hear. And then, as Chairman Corey mentioned, there's a 24-hour notice for trash to be set out under our current ordinance, so we would need to amend the ordinance if we wanted to move forward. And certainly, I'll let Mr. Nary speak to the need for that, if I've misconveyed that. But we need to change the ordinance to allow for a longer period of trash and material to sit on the side of the road while Republic works through the unlimited trash collection week preceding the event over the weekend. So be happy to answer any questions at that point.
So beyond that we can, we got the marketing and communication plan down, but on all fronts, the group that's met feels comfortable moving forward.
Madam Mayor, I think that's the correct statement. I think, you know, we do have the resources able to communicate that message and to make it happen. We just want to be clear that, you know, it's a new project, it's a new effort citywide, so there'll probably be some bumps, and let's figure them out and see how they go.
There's bumps on every new program, right?
Yep.
Mr. Nary, maybe you can address the ordinance?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so there is a provision in our code that requires the removal of your trash containers within 24 hours of pickup. There's no exception. So we can create an exception if the city were to designate that, that we would grant an exception for that for this period of time. Because realistically, I think as Mr. Corey stated, if people put it out on the weekend and their pickup day is Wednesday or Thursday of the following week, the likelihood they're going to haul it back onto their property and then haul it back out to the curb four days later is pretty remote. I would imagine most people won't. So that is our, you know, obviously, from a code enforcement standpoint, they do get calls today about trash receptacles and things like that. So we did want to avoid that issue and give the city, and there may be other issues in the future that there may be a necessity for the city to have an exception. The one that came to mind is during the Snowmageddon event a couple of years ago, we really didn't enforce that very heavily because it was very difficult for people to get them to the curb, and much less get them back from the curb within 24 hours. So we did not take an active role in enforcing that, even though that was in the ordinance at the time. Certainly, that was a rare event, and hopefully not to be repeated, but there may be other occasions besides this that the city may designate a longer period of time that something could allow to remain out there. But that was our only fix to that particular question. Otherwise, we will be fielding calls and having to address that with folks. And again, with it being citywide, we don't know if this is going to be a huge issue or not.
Any further questions or comments? Anything? Brett, do you have anything that you want to add?
Nothing to my recollection, Madam Mayor. I think everything's been covered. I think we've had some successful trial runs and have learned from things that have happened through it. And I, again, from the start, believe it was 2015, I think that this would be great for the city, and I still think so today.
Very good. Steve, any final comments, thoughts?
Nothing more, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Rochelle, anything from Republic?
Madam Harrison, I have one question.
You can only speak in front of the microphone.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Rochelle Klein, Republic Services, 2130 West Franklin Meridian Road. I did have a question as we were talking in our subcommittee meeting. You know, the city code establishes a framework for all citizens to abide by, but I don't know if HOAs could be more restrictive. Like, if the city says this is an exemption for this week, and code enforcement won't be out tagging carts because we realize people will put stuff out on the weekend, and they may leave it out for collection on even a Thursday or Friday. But I don't know if HOAs can then be more restrictive and say, we understand the city's doing that, but we would like to make sure that, and, you know, Bernie Glenn, that everyone brings it back to their garage and then puts it back on. I don't know that, but that's just something that came to mind as I heard you guys talking, that you may find a little bit, some HOAs may want to be more restrictive. I don't know if that's...
HOAs have their CCNRs, but they enforce them, we don't.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Thank you. That was the only thing.
Anything you wanted to add to that, Mr. Nary?
Exactly right.
Okay. Ms. Mylum?
I move that we accept the recommendation from Solid Waste Advisory Commission to expand the Trash or Treasure Program to include the entire city of Meridian.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move this forward. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Is part of that will be the ordinance amendment coming back to...
We would have to in order to...
To amend the ordinance.
We will bring back the ordinance for council action, and by you moving this forward, it would need that ordinance changed.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We appreciate your support.
Thank you very much.
Let's start marketing.
Or let's start shopping. We, at least, know shopping week, right? Sorry.
There's been a Christmas tree out in my neighborhood since, like, December 26th.
Okay. Item six C is Mr. Nary's.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I know the ordinance parts are always the most exciting part of the conversation, so I get this one. There's two, and the first one I'm going to talk about is the organization of the Solid Waste Advisory Commission. And there are certainly enough people here that can answer some of the questions of how we got here, but I give you a little background for both the folks here, as well as those that are maybe watching online. So the Solid Waste Advisory Commission was established in about 2010, but it preexisted that as an advisory committee, and it had been in existence for a number of years, predominantly to address the recycling funds, and how the recycling funds were collected, how those were then dispersed throughout the city through different programs, through playground equipment and some other items around the city. And that's the main function of the commission that existed back in the early 2000s and mid 2000s. As it evolved, and as the recycling program sort of ebbed and flowed with how the markets were, the commission also became in place to help weigh in on other programs, as well as the rates that were administered. There's a specifics in the contract with a franchisee, which was previously SSC, now Republic Services, on how rates are determined annually, but there are other services that are provided and rates related to those. So this citizens' commission was then moved from a committee status to a commission status to be able to weigh in on those issues, to participate in that, having public input about programs and rates and the different things that are done throughout the county. Each individual city throughout the county has their own program on how solid waste is done. Republic Services handles the majority of the waste collection in Ada County, and so they have been the franchisee of most of our cities, including us. Over time, as many of you are aware, especially in the recycling arena, it has become very complicated. It is not quite so simple as it may have been 10 years ago, where there's a very steady stream of market of where recyclables go, how they're done, how they're managed, how they're paid for, how they're purchased, and then there's a revenue stream that returns back to the city. It's not quite so simple anymore. It changes dramatically, and a lot of it is driven by foreign markets and not driven by local markets. And so it has become very complicated to deal with. And many cities have done it in different ways, but our neighbor to the east has had a coordinator on staff for a number of years to work directly with the vendor. There's a lot of coordination of city services and city needs that are managed by staff. Well, we haven't had staff. So the commission has stepped into that role for a number of years in doing that. Now you have volunteers that are made up of citizens, as well as some city staff, to manage your commission, the agenda, the minutes, and all of the extraneous work that needs to get done, as well as processing payments that are made, or processing the payments that are received, and then also dealing with recycling. So it's gotten really complicated, and sometimes what happens is the disconnect between something that might be really primarily a city function, that a volunteer, and I have to commend Chairman Corey as probably the best volunteer we have. And I don't mean that to slight any of the other commissions, but Chairman Corey has been a trooper in handling many of these things for the city, in both being the chair of our commission, as well as the Ada County Solid Waste Commission, and being our go-between. But we recognize that it's not the most efficient way to run a business like this. And so you folks approved earlier, and Public Works is in the process of hiring a coordinator for the city. And so that person will manage the city's expectations and needs in conjunction with the commission. So we worked with the commission, both from the staff and the commissioners, to determine what do we need the commission to do? That's really commission work, public input, public participation, rates, programming, the trash to treasure, other recycling programs. Again, the rates are probably the key component. We like to have that citizen component of weighing in on what makes sense for our citizens, what services are needed, and how they get paid for, and who pays for them, and how that's done. We've had a number of them this year. Again, the glass recycling is another good example of that. That's come through the commission. So what was intended was to carve out what is predominantly a city function that our city needs, whether it's the expenditure of money, processing payment, processing a payment to someone, or receiving payments, and things that, that way, it gives Republic a contact point that isn't a commission that meets monthly, but is a person that's on staff. And so that was something Republic was very supportive of, because, again, there's a lot of daily things that occur, maybe weekly is probably better than daily, but there are a number of activities that occur that it's difficult to have to work through either the volunteer chair, or a staff member that's a member of the commission that has other duties to do besides that, and then try to coordinate all of that, and then bring it to the commission on a monthly basis for approval. Not very practical. So we looked at carving out city duties, and then working with the commission on what made the most sense for them, and that's what's before you. So we already have a structure in our code on what commissions look like. This is the only commission remaining that has city staff on it, and we've recognized that this appeared to be a better opportunity to remove the city staff from being on the commission to providing the support functions, which is really their intent, of being there to provide whatever support's needed, and again, allow citizens, more citizen participation in the commission itself. So that's really what's in front of you, is that restructure. It removes the city employee positions that are currently on there, and is trying to fashion it to fit in the industry as well as citizen participation. Because, one, if you may notice, one of the things on there for members is a person in the industry. It wasn't intended for that person has to be a resident, because part of what helps the commission is having someone knowledgeable in the subject area, because there's such specifics about it. Now, again, this commission gets a lot of support from our franchisee in getting that information. But we felt, again, from the citizen side, having a person with a level of expertise in the industry. Right now, Mr. Neal is a former, the former head of the county landfill, so he is currently serving in the public work position that is one of the designated slots. Our desire was to have Mr. Neal continue his service and fill that particular position of the industry expert. The rest were all positions related to residents. We talked about, and we didn't include this specifically. It could be included in the ordinance if you wish, or simply an emphasis, as the mayor looks for members that have interest in this area, of business owners within the city. Because we have many business owners that don't reside in the city, but yet their business is impacted by the solid waste collection, and that might be another area that we may have a specific person for that. Sometimes, and the mayor's probably a better judge of this, it can be difficult if you get too many specific positions that have to be filled, because sometimes you don't get people that have that level of interest that fit that little slot. So we thought it'd be better to leave it broader, but still looking for folks in that area, at least until we, you know, feel comfortable that there really is a desire of people to serve in those different areas. But that was really kind of the intent of that, was to create a citizen-only commission would handle, again, the issues that were really relevant to citizens, weighing in on these programs, and the rates, and those types of things. We could put this into place whenever you feel comfortable. There's no need to add to the commission right now if you don't wish. The way our commissions are all structured, is all of our commissions are allow them to be up to nine. Some have nine, I believe the Parks Commission and Transportation have nine. Some have less than nine. Historic Preservation has seven. So it's really dependent on the mayor's desire, as well as the citizen interest that exists, but that's totally a call that can be made at a later time. It doesn't change anything the way the current structure of our commissions are. Removing these two positions off the commission would still leave them at five. So there would certainly be enough for them to continue business. And again, if the desire was to add up to nine, that certainly can be done. I would stand for any questions, or again, if you had specifics in regards to the commission, Mr. Corey certainly could weigh in. Rochelle's here from Republic. I'll give you their perspective if you'd like, but that's the basis of why this is in front of you.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
Mr. Corey, do you entertain a question, if you don't mind? Thank you, Bill.
Certainly, Counselor.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate your ongoing dedication to the SWAC. One of the pieces in this proposal that I've wrestled with, and I'm curious to really hear your perspective, is I think that it limits somewhat the authority of our citizen board to propose rules or propose changes. That part gets stricken out, and you guys are essentially a review and recommend committee. And I'm just curious, from someone who's been involved in SWAC for a significant amount of time, if you have any feelings on that or comments that you wanted to make around that particular subject.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanagh. Yes, having been in the environmental business for 30 years, I've certainly noticed that communities, as they grow, hit a point where there are issues that start to come up that need to be directed by the city itself. Certainly because of the experience that I've had over the last few years, I've recognized that there are issues that are coming from the county and from our citizens that need decisions to be made, and I've made major efforts during this bridge to make sure that you, as the council, are aware of these, since they are strategic and directional decisions, that... council, are aware of these, since they are strategic and directional decisions that define how we will manage solid waste. And there comes a point where those issues, which are really ones that the city government is making, need to be made by citizen, city employees because of the need for authority and various other issues. And it was my view at this point that we had hit that point. Boise similarly had no professional staff until they hit about 32,000 households, and we've hit 32,000 households. So we have, you know, hating, hating to use only a single example, but it does seem like this is the point where the city staff does get involved. And what we have left, things like the rate reviews and various other policy reviews, is certainly a full plate for us. We've been a partner in the development of this ordinance. We've worked with staff and with Republic on how to go ahead and set things up. We went ahead and reviewed the draft, and the commission went ahead and voted unanimously to pass it to you for consideration with a due pass recommendation. We're very comfortable with it. We do think Meridian has reached the size that they need this city staff support.
Madam Mayor, Paul Poggin. Steve, do you ever anticipate a time that the SWAC Board would want to propose a rule or a regulation or a fee separate from, again, a recommendation that would come from our waste provider or from staff? Maybe that's the crux of being a citizen group is that you do have some authority. You're representing our community to say this is what we think is best in addition to working with our staff and with our provider, but there's a certain amount of authority that comes from our citizen-led that is going to be removed. I'm just curious if there's been a time that, or you could envision a time where this body would want to do that.
Councilman Kavner, Madam Mayor, if I may. Bill, I was thinking that that, that some of the decisions about reviewing and recommending on ordinance changes stayed with the commission. I guess, Councilman Kavner, I don't anticipate really, I guess maybe what you're concerned with, because really the effectiveness of the commission, all of the commissions, I mean, very few of them, other than the Planning and Zoning Commission, have any rulemaking authority, but yet all of our commissions work hand in hand with our staff to make sure they are one consistent message. And I don't anticipate that being any different. I really think the most effective use of citizen commissions is to do it collaboratively so that way there is that give and take from, and again, you have a council member as an ex officio as well as the franchisee. So I anticipate the same dialogue that occurs today on how things are working or not working or what should be done differently. Again, I think policy consideration, recommendations from the commission would still come to the council for ultimate approval, but I think the commission would weigh in on whatever those recommended policies would be. So I don't anticipate, I think a lot of what, like Steve was saying, the intent here was to separate out the things that, as we talk through these, clearly were things that city staff needs to do, and that right now city staff is doing that as members of the commission, which is less efficient, and that they should have, and again, I want to commend both Carrie Glenn and Andrea Pope from our city staff that have been on the commission for a number of years and managing that along with their normal duties. And here, again, I think that was why we decided to recommend to the city council of having a coordinator position that would then work with this commission to do exactly what you're suggesting.
And I think this makes it consistent with our other commissions and what their role and responsibilities are. Any of our commissions can recommend an area that they would like to see a policy change or a policy in general. They would work with staff to develop something to bring to council, first to the commission to recommend approval and then on to council. So this is making it align with our other commissions.
And Madam Mayor, that may very well be the intent. Just the way that I read it is that their ability is to review and to recommend what is before them. And so it strips SWAC's ability, if there's something that our citizen commission thinks is important, it strips their ability to bring that forth without it being driven by staff. And so to me, that's the piece that I do have some concerns about. And if what is being intended is, I believe is being achieved, I just, I don't read it in there, in what's before us, for what it's worth.
Yeah, and I guess, Councilman Kavner, I don't know the context of it come up any differently than what it does today. Because today, the commission itself, if they, as the mayor said, or any of our commissions have a policy desire for the city to go forward, it gets voiced and discussed and brought forward anyway. So whether it's Parks or HPC or any of them, they all have the same. But there's no difference in what they're empowered to do between this commission and the others. That's, that would forward the consistency.
Madam Mayor, and I don't mean to belabor this point, then help me understand why the decision was made to remove the word "propose" from their duties and powers, if it's happening anyways.
So all of our commissions review and recommend policy, this is relative to their, all of them. They all have the same language as this. So that was the intent of the consistency. Does it mean they cannot raise it as a question and a discussion point? No, because they set the agenda of their meetings. So they still have the ability to do that. I don't foresee that being an issue where a commission, any commission would say, we would like to propose a new program or a different way of doing an existing program, and the staff responds as, well, that's not within your purview. Sorry, we don't care. I don't think that's ever happened. So I don't, so I don't anticipate that happening. But the functions of commissions are to review and recommend, and whether it's, again, whether it's planning and zoning that only has one specific area that they have decision-making authority, all of their decisions are reviewing and recommending the same. So it's intended to be consistent, that's all.
It is for the consistency and the review and recommend is all part of the propose because they propose to their own body and then they review and recommend. We oftentimes have on several of our different commissions, citizen groups that come to those commissions with proposals that they vet, they review, and then they bring it forward to city council. So it seems like we're concerned about semantics. The practice has been bringing this in consistency with the other commissions and certainly not stripping, but bringing some clarity and uniformity to all of our commissions.
Yes.
And this was the only one that still had staff members on it. As voting members, we want it to be truly that citizens' commission.
Yes.
Any other questions? Steve, thank you. And I would echo what Mr. Neri has said. You have done an amazing job above and beyond the call of duty, and we certainly don't want to take advantage of that, but we would welcome you continuing to serve for the next two decades.
Madam Mayor, you've already honored me, and I appreciate the honors that I've had from doing this position, and we'll just see how the future of roles goes.
That was a very political answer.
Very diplomatic.
Good job.
Very nice.
Okay, so we're looking for, that is listed as an informational item. We would bring this back?
Yes.
For action.
Next item, Madam Members of the Council, this is much more narrowly focused. So in the time I've been on the committee and on the commission and in between, periodically there is a conversation on where should people put their trash can. And no matter how much we educate folks and no matter how much we talk about it, there is a disconnect amongst a lot of our citizens on where to put them, both before and after, and where we find in Meridian, primarily, at least half of the city, puts the trash can on the sidewalk. And what happens is in many of our neighborhoods, the sidewalks are narrow, sidewalks have other obstructions on them like mailboxes and other things, and so the trash cans get in the way of the traveling along the sidewalks. And we get periodic complaints yearly from ones that are left out too long or left askew on the sidewalk, and so they impede people from traveling. Lots of other areas in the city, including the city of Boise, the trash cans are in the street. And the purpose of that is to, one, to make sure they aren't obstructed by parked cars so that they can get picked up effectively, and that is an issue that occurs here in Meridian, and that also, again, they are not obstructing the sidewalk. So the commission's had a lot of discussion. They've had citizen input about this on both sides, and the citizen, and the recommendation to them, and again, a lot of it is in wording and all that, but the recommendation of the commission is to recommend that this, that the trash cans need to move to the street off of the sidewalk with the rear of the can, the rear of the cart against the face of the curb. So there are areas that that's already being done that will be of no change, and there are neighborhoods that it will take an education effort to educate folks that that's where they need to put their trash cans in the future. But that is the recommendation. That's the ordinance that's in front of you. It's a fairly simple change in words. Obviously, we've discussed it at the commission. There is going to be a needed effort from an education standpoint, because I think when I asked Ms. Klein about how many residences in the city put their cans on the sidewalk, it was about half. So half will get it wrong and half will get it right. And so it will take a little effort to get the other half to understand where to put them. Other questions? That's basically it. It's a very simple change, but obviously there's a little bit more effort into making that change effective.
I guess, Mr. Neri, it would be similar to Mr. Kavner's question on the trash to treasure is, has a communication plan been discussed and are we ready to start educating?
So, Madam Members of the Council, we have discussed that a little bit. Most of our communication of this type is done through two means. One, through the billing, through our normal billings that we send out our own information through our utility bills, as well as, and Rochelle could correct me, is it quarterly? So they have a quarterly newsletter that is put out by Republic to share this level of information. So it will take a little bit of time and effort. We haven't got down to the specifics on when we're going to put this out. I think, again, it was to bring this forward for this conversation and then pick, when do you want to do this, so that we can begin the effort of getting the education out there. Now, I'm skeptical because I'm a lawyer, and that's kind of how we roll. But, you know, when we went and changed from unlimited trash to the cart collection system a number of years ago, it was thought at the same time, we will never get people to do this or understand it, and eventually they did. And it didn't take a monumental effort, and it didn't take years, not a year, maybe, but not years. But it did take an effort, but people did understand. And here, again, the other side, I guess maybe the sunny side of my earlier comment is, half of the city already puts them in the street. So half of the city doesn't need to be educated on it. That's how they already do it. So we do think we can handle the communication through our utility billing and through the Republic Services newsletter, and then, of course, we'll use our social media and such to tell folks when that is. And really, that would be the issue of when do you want to make this effective to put this into place. We did have a concern about the trash or treasure, but even in Boise, I mean, today, when you have bulky items, so you have pickup of couches and desks and other types of things, those still go on the sidewalk. So this won't change the trash or treasure. The can, the cart will still need to go in the street. Anything else, whether, again, it's a bulky item pickup or the trash or treasure, would still go on the sidewalk. We don't have the streets full of desks and chairs and couches anyway. So we didn't feel it was going to be a mixed message to folks. We're still going to tell them where those things will belong on the sidewalk anyway. It really is just educating about the cart.
So who enforces it if it's on the sidewalk? How is that enforced?
Well, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, that's a great question, and we did talk about that. So our, the way it's crafted, if you read it, it is preferred that it be in the street. That there are places, and I was trying to anticipate in a code, how do we deal with areas where it is not logical or practical to put it in the street? And not knowing where those are, that we said, you know, there is the ability to leave it on the sidewalk. Right now, our ordinance only cares when you put it out and when you take it back. Right now, it's preferred to be on the sidewalk, but I don't want to speak for code, but code enforcement doesn't go out and chase people for putting it in the wrong place. They go out and talk to people when they don't put it back. So we felt it was okay to give people at least the ability, if practical, to have to leave it on the sidewalk. Or what we tried to clear up is, it was already in the ordinance, and we tried to make it a little bit clearer. There are places where actually Republic Services is designated that you need to put your trash can here because of where the truck can go. And so there are situations where Republic is designated, that is where your trash receptacle belongs, whether it's in the street, in the driveway, in the sidewalk, whatever that is. If that's the case, then that is where they have to put it. So we left a little bit of room on where you put it, because, again, at the end of the day, our enforcement mechanism predominantly is getting it back off of the sidewalk after it's picked up and not left out on the sidewalk for two or three days. So that's as much of a non-answer as I could.
I know. I'm still trying to sift through that to see what the answer was. So you're just hoping that at least we move the needle from half to three-fourths of the residents putting it in the right place?
Or better, yes.
Any questions from counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylon.
Another question, well, maybe, for Republic. I was thinking that you guys had oops stickers that you could put on the carts, so when they put them in the wrong place, you could let them know that they need to move them?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Mylon, yes, we.
If you can be in front.
Sorry. Yes, we had a similar situation in the city of Middleton. So two years ago, the mayor and council decided to move all carts into the street off the sidewalks. And so what we did was we had cart tags, just a sticker printed up, and so we would move, regardless of whether the, you know, cart was on the sidewalk or not, we would service all carts and put them back where they should be, and then we would tag them saying, oops, it looks like we need to get your carts into the street to improve access. Like, we just had a positive little message about why, why we were moving carts into the street, and it took us probably six months to get everybody to comply. It was pretty easy. And once we made the case of, you know, accessibility for really kids on bikes, I know bikes generally go in the street, but mostly kids are on this, if they're young, they're on the sidewalks. And so we just said, to keep sidewalks clear for all of our citizens, we'd like you to put these carts in the street with the curbs, again, against the gutter. And so that worked really well. And so that would be on us, that part.
Great.
Madam Mayor.
That would be helpful. Yes, Ms. Mylon.
I also just wanted to comment. Yeah, so personally, this has been an issue, and I didn't bring this up, a citizen brought this forward, but in our subdivision, it's a huge safety issue. You see little kids riding to school, and then they have to ride into the street to dodge a trash can and then back onto the sidewalk and back into the street. And so from my perspective, this is just really important as a safety issue for our kids. And the other thing is, I think we're the only city in the valley who doesn't already have this in place.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bring that back as well?
Thank you. Item 7A, under Action Items, and I believe this would go to Caleb.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. I'm here to talk to you about a request for pre-annexation services, which largely includes sewer and water hookups in advance of annexation for a property located at 5233 West Franklin Road. This item was continued from November 7th and then, most recently, December 11th. I have updated the memo that was prepared for your December 11th item with some new information that was provided by the applicant, which includes a revised site and landscape plan, as well as an updated or a new narrative from the applicant. I did, well, did also want to mention that I did meet with Mr. Bell and Brenda a couple of weeks ago and just kind of walk through it. As you may recall, he missed the last meeting. It's my understanding, had a chance to watch it, though, on YouTube, but we had a chance to kind of talk a couple of weeks ago with Brenda present as well. So I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but really just provide kind of some of the highlights or really what's changed. But I did want to restart with some of the But I did want to restart with some of the background information. The subject property is designated mixed employment within the 10-mile interchange specific area plan. So the subject property is located right here. There are approximately 133 acres of property with the same designation, south side of Franklin and on the west side of Black Cat on our future land use map. The zoning designations that correlate best with the ME designation include community business, which is CC, general retail and service commercial, CG, traditional neighborhood center, TNC, and mixed employment ME. And that directly corresponds to the future land use map designation as well. So a couple of things. Let me move to the aerial real quick. So again, the subject property is located right here. Proposed is a 13,000-square-foot building on a six-acre site. The building includes a significant amount of office area and approximately half, about 7,000 square feet of warehouse area, some manufacturing there. So again, there is an office and showroom retail component. A vast majority of the site is proposed for material storage, warehousing, and manufacturing. The 10-mile interchange specific area plan calls for mixed employment areas to be designated to encourage multimodal travel and convenient circulation to supporting uses located within the area. The submitted site plan does not show the connectivity that we were hoping for a little bit here. There is a direct access point to Franklin Road. If services are provided, if council agrees to provide these services and allow this project to move forward through Ada County, would request that cross-access be provided to the adjacent properties. So again, we have convenience circulation for the users in the future. There's also a planned collector. I'm going to jump back real quick to comp plan. So again, on this map, this dashed, I don't know, is that purple, purplish line? There's a future east-west collector roadway between Black Cat and then a future north-south roadway as well. So on the south side of this property, essentially. The applicant has since amended the site plan. I'll let him speak a little bit more. Before, this was all called out as a paved storage area. Has significantly reduced that down to what they envision their business needs are for Butte Fence and then this future development area. There's a 30-foot right-of-way that's being preserved on the site plan with an additional 20-foot future landscape buffer. So that's great. And reduces, again, that future development, preserves the opportunity then for that east-west collector to happen when it gets to this property. Having landlocked public right-of-way doesn't make any sense today, but preserving for that certainly does make sense. And the last thing I think I'll call out, just as a change since last month when we discussed this, is he was able to locate some fencing materials, I guess, and has called out on the revised site plan that there will be a six-foot-tall privacy fence. So before, it was just called out as a fence. But has been amended to the perimeter will-be fence with the privacy fence. So I think that's kind of the highlights of what has changed. And again, hopefully, that provides a quick recap of where we're at in Ada County. Again, this property is not eligible for annexation. Pretty rural out here. City limits are not too terribly far away. But it'll be some time, I imagine, before we get this direction. But there were some improvements to this intersection that did allow sewer and water service anyways to be done with that intersection project and the roadway project on Franklin Road in advantage of the city limit. So I think with that, unless you have any questions for me at that time, that's kind of the update that I have on the due information, again, over the last 30 days or so.
Thank you, Caleb. Council, any questions? And at this time, is the applicant here?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions, 1029 North Rosario in Meridian. Mr. Bell is here today, so he would like to address the council and answer some specific questions that you may have. I'd like to thank the council and thank the staff for giving us the opportunity to come back before you guys. And Caleb did a really good job, I think, reanalyzing this. And I know he's a busy guy. And I hate to take up staff's time because it is valuable, just like your time. But I think we've addressed some of the concerns as far as making this fit in with that 10-mile specific plan by providing the collector, preserving that collector right-of-way along the south boundary, providing for a collector buffer. So when or if that collector is ever built, we have the buffer, we have the right-of-way there that will facilitate and not inhibit that future transportation plan in any way. We also, since the site is larger than what the Butte Fence needs are, Jared did agree to put future development there so that when that roadway does go through, or if it goes through, there is the potential that another user, or possibly, he builds a secondary building for whatever uses that he has, could go in front on that collector. Staff has indicated that they want some interconnectivity. And I agree with the staff and Mr. Bell is in agreement. So we will provide cross-access both to the east and to the west so that we can interconnect because there are smaller parcels that adjoin us. And so that will be a component. And that mixed employment or interconnectivity that's envisioned in this area can be achieved. And so he is agreed. We'll modify that and show the pavement going both to the east and west in that drive aisle alignment. Caleb's indicated that our parking, we show, exceeds the UDC. Our arterial buffer meets the 35 feet as required by the UDC. And that as far as the mixed use, we do have two uses on the site. We do have our office and our manufacturing. And so, you know, we are not just a single user, but two different types of components. And staff has also indicated that our building elevation will meet the design guidelines that the city has. And most importantly, I think, which I was very pleased to see, that staff did strike their concern statement that was in bold, saying that they had concerns that this could not fit or would not fit in with what's planned in the 10-mile area specific plan. And so I think they've done everything they can do and we've done everything we can do. And I'd ask the council to support this and I'll turn it over to Jared real quick.
Good afternoon, Jared. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council and staff.
If you can state your name and address for the record.
Jared Bell, Butte Fence, 2049 East Wilson Lane, Meridian.
Thank you.
Sorry I missed last month's meeting. I wished I could have been here. I did watch the proceedings later that day. But I appreciate you guys moving this forward so that I could be here and hopefully articulate a little bit better my vision of a bigger, better facility. In my letter, in 2001, when we built where we're at now, we thought we had plenty of space to be there and didn't think we'd be in this facility or outgrowing this facility, but we have and this is where we're at. And I've been working on this for two years. Our ultimate goal is to stay where we are. And thought we had some things in place there that I alluded to in my letter as well that kind of fell through. You know, I wanted to find property in the city limits. I looked a long time. And even earlier this summer, when we met with staff at a pre-meeting regarding this property and waiver, staff even asked if we'd looked at this property or this property. And yes, yes, we've kind of exhausted all efforts to be within the contiguous area of the city. So I reached out and had made several offers on other pieces of property. And this is ultimately where we land after doing due diligence and thought this would be a really good fit. You know, we want to continue to grow. We've had a lot of success as the city's grown. We've benefited from a lot of that construction and continue to see Meridian as our home. So I really would hope you guys will support this, granting this waiver and allowing me to move our facility out there. I believe it's going to be a really nice piece of property. It's not, you know, contractor's yard seems a little harsh. When I think of that, I think of big gravel facility with maybe some backhoes and some contractors coming in and out of it every once in a while. But our location now is a place where we want the public to come and we want to do business there. We want people to walk around in an environment that replicates part of their backyard or their living space so that they can see the beautifications that can be made with the services that we provide. And that's the vision that I have, is taking what we have now and making it bigger and better place for people to come. We do have six acres. I was ideally looking for four or five, but this was what was available that somebody was willing to sell me. So part of my construction estimates have always been to only develop three and a half to four acres. That got missed from the landscape site plan originally. So we did make that amendment for that future development on the south there. We plan on making it a beautiful perimeter with, obviously, the requirements for the landscape around the outside. And we know somebody that can put up a pretty nice fence to make it look nice. So with that, I am open to answering any questions that Madam Mayor or council members may have for me.
Thank you, Jared. Council, any questions? Okay? Seeing none?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Caleb?
Mr. Bell's still there. Just part of our conversation, I'm sorry I didn't bring it up. It is in the memo, but on page three. And I appreciate Becky talking about cross-access and the willingness to do that and preserve the collector. Another thing, and I should have called it out in my presentation, but we talked about it a little bit there, too, but it's in my memo, again, at the top of page three. Some of why I was comfortable striking that this isn't not consistent with the comp plan was this provision about that future development area. And I know that we had a conversation about that. But there is a provision that staff would recommend that if you move forward with this, that the future development of that roughly two, two and a half acres or whatever remains, again, that whatever develops there is pulled towards that future collector and has a floor-to-air ratio and the square footages that are consistent with the plan. So I just want to put that out there and again, while he's here, because I know he has some, or at least did have some, concerns with that. That is in the memo. And that's, again, why I felt comfortable kind of striking through that was, yeah, then we got the north and the south half that are generally consistent with the comp plan. So sorry I didn't, in my original presentation, bring that up.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, one other note that I see that I missed here. On page three there, too, under the paragraph B there, at the end, it talks about where we added the fence. And it says, "The subject property would be required to screen the storage yard with a six-foot solid fence if developed within the city." I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that if we are able to build our facility here, that fence will go up immediately, not regardless of whether we're contiguous or whatever that would be done upon construction. So just to make that clear.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, any further information needed for staff or applicant?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borden.
Question for Caleb. The recommendation and agreement to do cross-access east and west, is that applied to the northern parcel as well? So would there be a cross-access commitment on the future development site as well as?
So, Madam Mayor, that was only intended for the northern parts where that drive aisle is coming off of Franklin, basically after the parking stalls stub that up. To the south, I think we're going to be okay because we don't know how that future development site's going to develop. We may, in the future, want to see cross-access down there as well. But with the collector and the unknown of how that develops, I think we're okay for now to address that maybe in the future. So I think we're good connectivity-wise for now, at least, with cross-access on the north and not the south.
Okay, any further questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Seeing none, I move that we approve the water and sewer to the unannexed property at 5233 West Franklin Road, including all staff recommendations and applicant comments.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to any discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, before we move on, I just wanted to sort of circle back. I know there was a draft agreement. So I think this will actually be before you, again, to actually approve all the terms as you just directed the motion. So I don't know. I'll work with legal staff on if that's next Tuesday or 10 days out. I don't know how much work, but just wanted to let you know we'll work on that. But you will see this again to kind of finalize that motion you just made.
And I guess just a comment to staff and to the applicant. I realize that there was a lot of compromise and a lot of discussions to bring this into code. So it wasn't something that didn't fit out there in the vision of the comprehensive plan. There was a lot of give and take. And I appreciate the work that staff has done with the applicant and the representatives. So we appreciate all those efforts. Okay, under item 8A is our Human Resource Department annual report and update.
Thank you. Thank you, CJ. Madam Mayor, Members of Council, it's a pleasure to be back here in front of you for another annual department report. As we were reflecting back and putting this presentation together, we were surprised to see how quickly the time has passed. But I do take great pride to stand in front of you today and represent and communicate to you the hard work and the effort and the accomplishments that the HR team behind me and upstairs work hard at every day, every year, to provide what we do for the employees each and every day. And I will certainly try to keep it brief. So here are the things I'd like to cover with you today. A little bit of a quick overview of human resources, an update on the 2018 projects and initiatives that we communicated a year ago. I'd like to give at least a high-level update on our employment efforts, compensation administration, our benefit administration, our training and development efforts, our employee engagement focuses, policy administration and compliance. And then, of course, I'll stand for any questions you may have. You've seen this graphic before, but it really depicts a lot of what we do in human resources each and every day. I'm not going to go through that wheel. But as you can see, there are many factors and many areas that we provide support and services on to our employees, to the departments, that we support year-round. Here's a look at your Human Resources Department. These faces are all the same to you. No new faces. Looks a little different. However, you will see an additional graphic there at the bottom that we are in the process of recruiting for the new generalist position that you graciously approved for us during the budget cycle. So the next time I'm in front of you, I will be making an introduction of a new employee to our team. We often get asked, how do you do what you do? How does the team do what you do each and every day? Being so small, supporting so many employees, on top of all the different projects and initiatives that are asked of us throughout the year. And simply put, this is how we do it. And simply put, this is how we do it. It takes teamwork. We together collectively work very well together. We support each other. We step in and assist each other. And without that effective teamwork, we would not be able to do what we do each and every day. So let's take a look at the accomplishments for 2018. So the first area I'd like to just highlight for you is going to be the area of compliance. And I'm not going to go through each and every single one of the items listed on this slide, but I'm going to call out a few that are higher level, if you will. So under the compliance arena, if you will, the internal alignment, we are entering into the next phase of the internal alignment effort. For those of you who may or may not recall, that is our opportunity in human resources to make sure that every job description across the city is reviewed and updated to accurately reflect the current requirements of the job every three years. So we take the 190 positions that we have. We've broken those down into thirds. And every year, we go through this effort to ensure that we take a look at every job description at least once every three years. In addition to that, you'll see there at the bottom of that box, we have started and are in progress and are on the edge of completing an I-9 audit. And that's very important for us to ensure that we are compliant with the I-9 expectations and regulations. And we are about 82% complete, and we hope to complete that here in the next few months. The next area of accomplishments are employee engagement. And so you'll see that there are several things that we do throughout the year to support the employee engagement efforts here at the city. This year specifically, we administered an employee engagement survey. All of the departments have received their department survey results. We shared the city results at our annual team meeting, and we are continuing to focus and put attention on action planning, celebrating the successes at the department level for all of the things that we did do well, and then putting some action plans on the things that we would like to do even better. In addition to that, this year, something new for us was our all-city employee meeting. And we had that this past November at the Galaxy Event Center, and we had great participation. I know not all of you were able to attend, but for those of you who were, we greatly appreciated it. For those of you who had a conflict, we were sorry we missed you, and we hope certainly that we see you next year. This is a new area for us in our presentation to the council, and this is community focus. And the reason this is new to, for us to deliver to you is because we are very much a centralized employee support department. So a lot of the services that we do each and every day focuses for the employees that are here each and every day. But we are starting to get into some efforts that have a community focus on them. One of them, most recently this past October, was our United Way campaign. For those of you who had an opportunity to stop by, we greatly appreciated you coming by and you participating in that effort. The reason you see that there are two campaigns listed on this particular slide is because the presentation I'm giving to you today represents the calendar year of 2018. I generally have been in front of you on the fiscal year because I've always presented in September, and we've moved to January. So we actually, and since I last was in front of you, had two campaigns. In addition to that, you see that we continued our youth work-life skills program, and I'm going to talk more about that here shortly. The next area that I want to talk about is training and development. And in addition to these standard training efforts that we provide every year, we've had some additional training initiatives that we rolled out this past year. Most notably there at the bottom of the box, you'll see that we did what we call an April roadshow, or excuse me, a HR roadshow. And HR went around to all of the different departments across the city, and we provided general employee compensation training to all general employees to help them better understand the current compensation program that applies to them. In addition to that, we partnered with iKrimp, and we have just initiated our annual training for avoiding discriminatory harassment. We completed with the fire department, so we very much appreciate them allowing us the opportunity to pilot the training with them. And we will be continuing to roll that training out February and March across the city. Under the area of benefits and wellness, some new things that occurred this past year. Christina and the efforts of the committee that she works with implemented a bike-share program that, which was very well-received, so we were really excited to be able to offer that this year. In addition to that, you had Christina in front of you a few months ago on behalf of the benefits committee and all of their efforts this past year to come forward with a self-funding recommendation that you all approved. And now that they've done a lot of that work, they'll be moving that forward over the course of 2019. And in addition to the new efforts for benefits and wellness, there at the bottom, you'll see that we have new family-focused events that we offered this past year, and we're going to talk about that here in just a few minutes. Compensation is always big for us in human resources, and it is something that we do all year-round. It's not a one-time event. The budget is a one-time event, but this is something that we need to be focused on, that we operate under each and every day, whether it's with a job offer, evaluating and analyzing current salaries, those types of things. So you'll see there several of the different efforts that we had this past year. Some of those you saw through the budget process this past summer. Some of those are reoccurring each and every year. However, you will see there that what was new to us this year were, well, not new, I shouldn't say, but we did conduct a very thorough market analysis that was presented to you. We did several compensation studies in multiple areas of the city, as well as we also participated in, and we analyzed several compensation studies in the salaries that we have here at the city to ensure that we remain market competitive. Employee relations, this one's also big for us. Significantly this year has been a huge focus on behalf of the team for recruitment. I was speaking with Cameron Ariel, the Director of Community Development, recently, and we were talking about all of the recruitment efforts that are occurring for all of the departments across the city. But with the addition of building services and their needs to fill positions, we've seen about a 25% increase in our recruitment efforts, which translates to a significant amount of time on behalf of Brittany, Jessica, Laurlee, and Christina to fill those positions, to get the departments what they need in order so, in order so they can continue the services that the public expects. Also, under the employee relations umbrella, we've spent some time this year taking a look at our new employee orientation program. I've been in front of you over the last couple of years talking about the different enhancements that we've offered or that we've implemented to en, enhance the program. We continue those efforts this year. What we did in May was we implemented a new employee orientation survey that goes out to any new employee within 48 hours of their participation into the orientation so that we can get their feedback about their experience, their welcome to the city, did they receive what they were expecting, and any ideas and suggestions of things that we could do differently for them to better position them for their time with the city. This is a new focus or topic that I'm bringing forward to you this year, which is process improvements. A lot of what we've done over the last couple of years have been operationally-based and very reactive to the needs of the departments that we support. In addition to continuing to do that though, we wanted to take a look internally to our department to see what we could be looking at that could make things more efficient, a little clearer, a little better. And here are a list of some of those things. I've already touched on the new employee orientation improvements that we've made. One of the other things that we also implemented this year was we added on our intranet page, a resource page, if you will, that focuses on external training resources that are available to employees and managers as they look to see what kind of training they would like for their staff members to receive, or staff would like to receive, to develop themselves, both internally for their position as well as for professional development purposes. We often got asked, "Where could they go?" We put it in one place, at their fingertips. I'm not going to go heavily into this slide. This is about the strategic objectives that we continue to work on in addition to all the other things that we just covered. But just letting you know, all of the strategic objectives that we have been working on, we are continuing to work on. We will be back in front of you, I believe in March, when the mayor provides her strategic update to the council. And we're kind of excited to do that because we have a couple on the horizon that we'll be presenting as a closeout. So if we want to focus just for a few minutes, I'll, excuse me, on employment, staffing and employment issues are really a big part of what we do each and every day. And when I say "we," it's really the team behind me who makes this happen. But you'll see here, we have a city average retention rate for 2018 of a little over 91%. That's remained consistent year over year in that ballpark of the low 90s. The average years of service currently here at the city for our employees is a little over or almost eight per, eight years. So 7.84 years is our average of tenure currently. And then you'll see there at the bottom how it breaks out by department. And you'll see the highest level of years of service in each department, as well as the average years of service as well. So one of the things that we would like to do in the Human Resources Department is take a moment and thank all of the employees that are here at the city for their dedicated years of service in supporting each other as well as the public each and every day. Another effort that we have under employment is our youth work-life skills program. This is a program that, under the leadership of Mr. Nary, when he was with, leading the Human Resources Department, we implemented this program. And every year, this program has come back, and every year, it has been well-received. And it is a thanks to you all for funding, providing us the funding that we need to provide this opportunity to our youth in the community to help them establish and understand what work and life are all about, and how to interview for a job, what job expectations are, how to write a resume, those types of things. So you'll see some details there. This is an effort that is managed by Laurlee Berg in our office once a year, and she's single-handedly, and she will not take most of the credit for it. She does have the support of Brittany, but she does manage this process pretty much on her own, all the way through reviewing the applications, interviewing all of the youths that apply, providing them interview feedback, placing them within the departments, checking in on them, but giving them feedback, those types of things. We also want to give a special thanks to Pamela Johnston. This is her second year that she's actually come from the Meridian Library District, and we've gotten her with these, these kids or these youths to help them understand how to develop an effective resume as they look for that next summer job, or they look at exiting high school, may or may not be going to college, as they exit into the workforce, how to do that effectively and represent themselves with the resume. And then there at the bottom, you will see, it doesn't represent all of the youths that we had this year, but we did collectively get a picture that we do every year. They have an opportunity to meet the mayor. We provide them an end-of-season wrap-up party. But not only do we provide them that opportunity, we also want to hear what the kids received and got and gained from that, the experience, and what they're going to take away. And then what could we add to the program to make it even better for next year's kids? So that's something that we greatly enjoy. But in a nutshell, we could not do or provide this program from Human Resources without the support and participation from the departments across the city. So we want to give a special thanks to each of the departments that participated this past year. So here we are with some data on recruitment. This is the only slide, I will probably cover each and every single number on the slide because it does highly represent the amount of time and commitment from our staff. This past year, we received over, and processed over 2,500 external applications for employment here at the city. Our recruitment costs, and let me just say for this one slide, it is an FY '18, it's a fiscal year '18 representation, not a calendar year. A little over $20,000 in advertising costs. With that being said, those advertising costs are the initial costs from Human Resources. If a position needs to be re-advertised or the advertisement needs to continue, then those advertising costs are from the department. This is just the initial costs to get the job out there, get it advertised, and get it going. We posted 61 positions this past year, and the thing to keep in mind is that is the posting of 61 positions, but we hired 147 people within those positions. That resulted in collective efforts of Christina and Laurlee, who participated in over 400 hours of interviews with the departments to make sure that they were getting the right candidate for the position of their needs. The support team behind the recruitment efforts between Jessica upstairs, as well as Brittany, is 139 pre-employment appointments or meetings. They coordinate 251 drug and alcohol tests. Jessica processed over 369 reference calls. The average cost of recruitment was $342. And the average time to fill the positions between the partnership between the departments and the recruitment staff was a little over 96 days. That does not include the police department recruitment effort. If you want to include the police department, then it averages about 146 and a half days. Significant amount of time, significant amount of effort and commitment, but it, most of all, it is a partnership between Human Resources and the departments, and collectively, they work together to make all this happen. So here are some of the current initiatives. Those were some of the accomplishments, but here are some of the current initiatives that we're working on for 2019. We are continuing to recruit for all of the active job postings on the website, and as of today, there are 18 postings that we are currently recruiting for. I've been in front of you previously and talked about the job description template that we have and how our job descriptions are formatted, and we're converting them to a new format, and we will continue that. And then the other thing here, we want to say thank you to the IT team, is we are going to be focusing our efforts this year on a new, developing a new employment application tool that will provide the applicant a much better, positive customer experience. Some things that are on our radar though, these are things that we would like to be able to get to if we can get through everything else, is we do want to take a look at, at reviewing our current recruitment process here at the city. We want to apply the Peak Academy training that Christina and myself had the opportunity to go through this past year. In addition to that, we want to take a look at some of our internal tools and processes and just make sure that they are up to par, and if there's anything that we can do to tweak them to help the recruitment process, that we adjust and make those changes. Under compensation and benefit administration, one of the things that our staff does every year is we attend trainings, we go to seminars, we attend webinars, we do everything that we can to make sure that we are abreast of the most current, updated legal best practices, industry-standard information. So in turn, we are providing the best services possible for the employees and the managers that we support. And you'll just see a couple of categories that are listed on that slide. But if we look specifically at compensation administration, specifically around salaries, every year, we do performance evaluations. For employees who have been here for more than one year, they are on an annual cycle of every October. Every employee in the city though, during their first year of employment, receives a six-month evaluation and/or a one-year evaluation that occurs at any time throughout the year following one year from their hire date. So this past year, we processed approximately 408 performance evaluations. In addition to that, we also facilitated 27 promotions and/or transfers, and that's a lot of paperwork that happens there. Specifically though, for the annual city performance evaluation cycle, we want to take a moment and say thank you to Barb and Amy in the Finance Department, because we do process, and there it says, 210 performance evaluations in the month of October and November, over 16 working days, because there's holidays in there as well, to ensure that each and every single performance evaluation gets processed, so that every eligible employee for an increase gets that increase on that November paycheck. Without the assistance of the payroll department, we could not make that happen in the very short window of time that we do, so we very much appreciate that. So here are some current initiatives for 2019 that we are working on in regards to compensation. We are going to continue a general employee compensation analysis. That's an ongoing effort that we do every year. That doesn't change. What is new this year is we've established a compensation committee who is dedicated to looking at our current compensation program for general employees to ensure that the current compensation program that we have is competitive, which is very key to the recruitment efforts that we work on each and every day. In addition to that, you'll see we're going to continue our efforts in regards to our strategic objectives under compensation. And then of course, what's on our radar, we know it's coming, will be a review of compensation studies that we participate in, salary surveys that we participate in. compensation studies that we participate in, salary surveys that we participate in. We take a look at annual data, we take a look, or excuse me, not annual, local data, city data, or Treasure Valley data, state data, regional data, so that we feel comfortable and confident that the wages that we have are extremely competitive, because we want to attract new valuable employees, but we want to retain the valuable employees that we have currently here at the city. So for Benefit Administration, there's so many different things that we do in regards to benefits. The Benefit Committee, as you know, meets regularly to keep their eyes on and focused on the benefits that we do offer at the city for medical, dental, and vision. We partner with our benefit broker Mercer, whom you've had in front of you before, and that takes a strong commitment and time from that, from those individuals to ensure that we keep this moving forward each and every year. Christina has done a great job this year with open enrollment. She has facilitated 16 open enrollment meetings. She made a little bit of a change this year in an effort to get out there in front of everyone. Rather than having open meetings, she did reach out and coordinate with each of the departments to come into their staff meetings and provide that information. That expanded the number of meetings that she facilitated from 10 to 16, but that was time well spent, and from what we heard from employees, much appreciated. So we certainly appreciate that, Christina. In addition to that, she has hosted the Fifth Annual Benefits Fair this year. Several vendors participated. We appreciate you letting us use the council chambers to offer that again this year, as the standard conference rooms were very much tied up. And then in addition to that, she does a great job at the FMLA Administration, the Workers' Compensation Claim Processing Managing Administration, and then making sure all of our EAP services are out there and available to our employees as needed. So here's some information. I'm not going to go into great detail in regards to Workers' Compensation and Employee Assistance Program, but what you'll see here is kind of the activity that we've had year over year since 2014. Worker compensation is handed by Christina primarily on her own. I do provide her some backup support if she's tied up in an interview, but she is the one who manages each and every single one of these claims. She works with the departments in regards to light duty or restricted duty, getting employees back on the job. She liaisons with the State Insurance Fund as well as with the medical providers. We continue to be able to offer an Employee Assistance Program on behalf of the council, who provides us the budget for that every year, and you can see the utilization there from 2014 to current. It is something that our employees are utilizing, whether it's for themselves or for a family member. And all of that information is confidential. We just receive utilization and participation data, but the specific services are confidential between the EACP service provider and our employee. The Wellness Committee is something that Christina also manages and coordinates and spends a lot of time with the panel or the participants of the committee as well. And they work every year to bring several of these events forward to us, but there are a few new ones this year that I'd like to call out. We did have the Wear Purple for Domestic Violence Awareness recognition this year, and there's a picture there of folks wearing purple in recognition of that. They're to your right, I believe. In addition to that, we wanted to expand some of our activities to include families. And so this year, we offered a gingerbread decorating contest, which was very well received. A lot of fun to see. All the pictures are up on the website if you didn't get a chance to see that, but it's pictures of our employees and their families, and some of them are work families, because we spend a lot of time together as well, celebrating the holidays, coming together and doing something fun. But in addition to all of the efforts of the Wellness Committee, one of the things that we are very proud of is we were the recipient of the American Heart Association's Bronze Level Workplace Achievement Award, and that was recently awarded to us this past month by Ken Quarter, who is a new addition to the American Heart Association. So we're very proud to receive that Bronze Level Award. However, we are striving, and I know the Wellness Committee would like to strive to see if we could receive the Silver Award in the future. So here are some current initiatives. As you all know, we are in the process of preparing for and conducting a benefit valuation. You all were gracious enough to approve some budget dollars for us this past summer to do this. This is an opportunity for us to take a look at our current benefit program compared to other benefit programs that are offered within our local market, to ensure that we have, as best we can, a competitive benefit program offering for new employees and our existing employees. This has been a shift in recruitment over the past several years. Previously, in several years, it's been more focused on shifts, work hours, workdays, wages, and we are seeing a lot more conversation and question and a lot more knowledge from applicants out there in regards to what benefits do you offer? What does that look like? When do they take effect? What else do you have? Those types of things. So it's a great time for us to be assessing our benefit package. In addition to that, we are going to continue the development of the self-funding option, and then you'll see there that we have closed out one of our strategic plan objectives, which Christina communicated to you at the mayor's previous presentation, and we'll be forward in front of you here in a couple of months with a new one, maybe even two. On our radar is once the, we've had an opportunity to have the benefit valuation conducted, we will need to come together and analyze those results and prepare any recommendations that we want to make to council. So Training and Development, this is a significant effort on behalf of the Human Resources Department as well. I'm only going to call out two that are on the screen. The other four are things that we offer every year. They are consistently available to our employees, but this year, we added General Employee Compensation Training, which I referenced earlier, where we went out to all of the employees and helped them better understand the compensation program that they have operating under. And then in addition to that, I spoke as well, when I talked about compliance, which was the Avoiding Discriminatory Harassment Training. We wrapped up the pilot effort with fire, and we'll be rolling that out across the city here in the next few months in partnership with Carl Erickson from ICREMP. And I do want to, he's not here today, but I do want to take a moment to thank him. He has to come in and partner with us, and he is in every single session that we deliver. So we partner between Human Resources and our ICREMP partners to ensure that we are providing an effective informational, compliance-driven training, so everyone has a full awareness and understanding. Education reimbursement is something that we also offer to our employees. You will see here that you have some data in front of you that captures the utilization of this program since 2014, all the way through, what this should say for FY '19 is FY '19 to date. I just noticed I don't have that on there, but that's the current activity for FY '19. We have 13 participants. We've expensed four reimbursements, and fund utilization is listed there historically So what are we currently working on? In addition to the compliance training, one of the things we're also continuing to work on is the Leadership Training Program that we launched in 2017. We're continuing to offer opportunities for professional development through that program as well. We're going to continue with our strategic objectives in regards to training and aiding our employees. But one thing that we'll be doing new this year is that we're going to be administering a supervisor supplemental survey to the Employee Engagement Survey that we had a few months ago. On our radar for training, we will be looking to deliver some diversity awareness training that does feed directly into one of our strategic objectives. We really would like to develop a supervisor toolkit, if you will, that's online and available as a resource to supervisors who are in need of a question or a process or a tool that is at their fingertips, rather than a phone call to Human Resources. Of course, we're always welcoming those phone calls, but sometimes, we're not always available in the moment, so we want to be able to provide that to them in the future. And we also want to get out there and do some brown bags, some lunch and learns, and develop some HR 101s, and just kind of educate our general employees on some of the things that are available to them through Human Resources that they may or may not know about. Employee Engagement. So as it states there on the slide, HR and the team is very passionate about promoting a culture of employee engagement here at the city. We've been pretty consistent with offering several programs each and every year, including an annual picnic, two communications of newsletters. But the two things here that I would like to call out that we've added to employee engagement is our All-City Employee Meeting. That was new this year. And in addition to that, we did roll out and administer an Employee Engagement Survey. You'll see there that the Employee Engagement Survey did result in 372 responses from city employees, and although employee recognition is something that we do every year, I did want to take a moment and let you know that we did take an opportunity this year with the mayor, with the department directors, and Human Resources to go and present 61 employees with a service award this past year. Some things that we're going to continue to work on in 2019, a new one that we're kind of resurrecting, if you will, is Human Resources is working on quarterly presentations that we will actually go out and work, or go out and partner with departments to join their staff meetings and really present to employees the things that HR is focused on. What are we working on? And then also make ourselves available to any questions that they have, because not every employee has the opportunity of their time to visit Human Resources, so we want to bring Human Resources to them. On our radar would be to facilitate a second city employee meeting, and in addition to that, we're already ramping up in our minds and thinking about the 2019 United Way campaign. That has been something that has been near and dear to our hearts in Human Resources. We put a lot of effort into making a successful campaign, and I'm proud to say this past year, we did the carnival, and we raised over $16,000 for those in need in our community. We could not do that without the support of everyone here at the city. And I believe we're about to wrap up with Policy Administration. So one of the things that we do offer is the Compliance Line. That is the tool that is available 24/7 to any employee who has a concern that they would like to communicate to Human Resources. We implemented this hotline, if you will, back in 2016. As mentioned, it's available by telephone or by computer. Currently, today, we've received two concerns that we've had an opportunity to quickly look into, but generally, what that service is there for is an employee to report or communicate any type of concerns that they have with any FLSA practices, maybe what they think might be a policy violation, if they have an ethics concern, those types of things. Of course, employees have the opportunity to also communicate with their supervisors, their chain of command, their department head, any director within the city, Human Resources and/or the mayor, but we also provide a 24-hour service through the Compliance Line as well. We are currently still working on our policy manual revision. We are looking forward to completing that project in the next year. I'm sure you will see us in front of you in the future in regards to any new policies that we would like to bring forward for consideration, or any changes to any existing policies as well. I mentioned earlier that we conducted an I-9 audit. We are not finished with that as of yet, but we are 82% complete. That's very important, especially in our line of work, that we remain compliant with the expectations that are given to us, so that when we are audited, we pass. And then there again is the Avoiding Discriminatory Harassment Training. I think each of you have had the opportunity, as well as a lot of our city staff, to participate in the recent ICREMP training, and through that process, supervisors had an opportunity to participate in a specific training around this category that really talks about the importance and the EEOC expectations. And the EEOC does highly encourage annual training that is facilitated by live trainers that has policy information embedded into it that is specific and relevant to your business, and that is the time and effort that we have been working with ICREMP to develop and that we will be delivering over the next few months. So we're going to continue the internal alignment, as I mentioned, and in addition to this, one of the things that we'd like to look at this year is researching the criminal background check services that are available. We currently use ISP, and we have been using ISP for a while, but we want to see if there's something else out there that would make our process more efficient, or vice versa, if there's something with ISP that we can be using that they offer to make our process more efficient and more timely. We want to be able to vet that out and make any necessary changes. That certainly will benefit all of us here at the city, but anything that we can reduce our time to fill because of a timeline process is something we want to focus on so that we can get folks joining the city and into positions as soon as possible. On our radar will be some affirmative action reconciliation, again, compliance, and then the continuation of the harassment training. So with that, I know I delivered a lot of information. I'm hoping not, didn't take an exceptional amount of time to do that. I do want to take a moment, though, and I know, I believe I have Christina and Laura Lee here. Upstairs is Jessica and Brittany. I know you all are aware of this, but I did want to take a moment on behalf of the HR team and thank Brittany. Excuse me. She has joined us a few years ago when she was just starting out in her career, and she has been a huge access to our department, but in addition to that, she's also gained valuable skills. In her time with us, she has decided that she would really like to pursue a career in Human Resources, which we're very proud of, because it's a line of work that we enjoy doing. As a result of that, though, she was recruited away from us, and she will be leaving us around the 18th of January, the 18th? The 18th of January to start the next step of her HR career focusing on the recruitment efforts for Balsam Brands. So if you have an opportunity to see Brittany, please stop by and say thank you to her for all she's done. Even though she'll be leaving us, we will still be keeping in touch with her. She will still be visiting us. We know she's going to do well in this next stage of her career, but wanted to take a moment and recognize her as well. And then stand for any questions.
Thank you, Crystal.
I was trying. How'd I do?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Lowell Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Crystal, thank you so much for all that you and your amazing team do. It is greatly appreciated. And I know in all that you do and keeping a pulse on what's happening out there and in our very, very skinny opportunity for people that are looking for employment, are you finding that city, and not just our city, but cities overall, are looking more at the things beyond compensation and benefits, which are so critical, but I'm hearing more and more about, and I can't remember what they call it, but like life aspects with flex time and vacation and flexibility with all of those things, because people do so much more than just work?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Lowell Roberts. Yes, and that will be a part of our benefit valuation. We are getting more information from municipalities that neighbor with us, the challenges that they face as well, but the things that we are looking at, and some of the things we currently offer today would be flex schedules, right? Those types of things that you're referencing. In addition, more of that work-life balance, and how do we help make that happen? Because the time that we do spend here, we are very busy in what we do, and so how do we do that? And accruals on vacations, and what sick leaves look like, and those types of things. So all of that's going to be encompassed in the benefit valuation, because we recognize that it's more than just medical, dental, vision, or a voluntary insurance. So that's what we want to look at to see if we have a well-rounded and maintain a competitive benefit package. So yes, we are seeing that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Kristi, you hit the nail on the head about the work that you do that touches every one of our departments. You know, I think from the city council's perspective, our city employees are one of, if not our, most valuable resource. How can we, as a body, as a council, continue to support your work? What are the things that you need from us?
Councilmember Kavner, that's a great question, and I'll take the opportunity to answer that then, since you asked it. I would say at this point in time, what I would ask, and I know I get this from Councilmember Bart when he meets with me, is for your time and attention and your consideration for anything that we bring forward to you for consideration, for in addition to the city, that's something that would be of a benefit and value to our employees, whether it's a policy change, whether it's a benefit change, those types of things. We make every effort to thoroughly vet everything out, and when we come in front of you as a body for your consideration, you have historically given us that great consideration, so I'd ask that that continue, because the things that we are bringing forward, we feel are of value, and we recognize there may be things that we can do, and there may be some things that we can't do, but that you just ask your questions, come visit Human Resources if you have questions, but really, your time and commitment to evaluating and the consideration that you give to the things that we bring forward to you is something we would greatly appreciate. Since you asked the question, I would also ask- Since you asked the question, I would also ask, I know everybody has a very busy schedule, but it would also, I would invite each of you to have the, if you have the ability with your busy work schedules as well, to participate in any of the city events, whether they're from the employee meeting to a wellness event, any of the types of activities that we provide to our employees. We welcome you to join us as well. Some of you have had that opportunity to do so, but our employees love seeing you all out there with us, participating in those activities. So I recognize everybody has a busy schedule, but would very much appreciate, if you could participate, please do. And if there's any questions at any time, come ask. Any one of my staff is more than happy to, to sit and visit and, and coordinate with you.
Madam Mayor, follow up. Just then, then a request, I know as you were talking about employee recognition, I know that's something that's really important to all of us, and even Councilmember Mylum reached over to me, she says, "How come, how come we don't know about those?" And so if there's an opportunity to let us know, I don't know, maybe we're not invited, but I would love to be able to recognize our employees for their great work and their service to our community.
Councilmember Cavanagh, it's a great suggestion and offer and comment, and I've captured it, and I know I have Christina behind me who's probably already written it down as well. So if you'll give us some time to think about what we could do to, to help facilitate something like that, be more than happy to get back either to you directly or through Councilmember Burt, who is our HR liaison, in how we can help facilitate that.
Awesome, thank you.
That's great, thank you.
Mr. Burt.
Director Ritchie, fantastic job. Great presentation, very detailed, not surprising at all from you and what you do in your department. You do such a great job and you have such a great team. And as a council, we're very grateful for what you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for the kind words. I know, I appreciate those myself, but it's really the team behind me that, that allows us to do what we do, but gives me the opportunity to represent them to you every time I'm in front of you. So thank you very much and thank you, team.
Any other questions or comments? Very thorough. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Item AB is under our vehicle sharing program and the progress report. Emily.
Thank you for joining us.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm Emily Kane. I'm a deputy city attorney in the city attorney's office. Been nominated to talk to you about our efforts to move forward what we're calling shared vehicles in the city of Meridian, which is the e-scooters and maybe someday e-bikes and the self-service vehicles that we see in Boise and other towns around the nation. To start, little overview of what we've done so far over most of the winter. So city staff has worked as a team to learn more about these programs and learn more about this community's needs and concerns regarding these programs. We, we've learned more about them from our vehicle sharing program operators, or what I affectionately call our Vespos. There are two programs that we've worked with, Bird and Lime. They provided really valuable input and helped us, as I said, understand how they work and kind of their, their vision for Meridian. We've also reached out to our community partners, Meridian Development Corporation, the Downtown Business Association, the Chamber, the School District, Nampa Meridian Irrigation District, since a lot of our pathways utilize their easements with Nampa Meridian, ITD, and also, of course, ACHD. The Parks and Recreation Commission and the Transportation Commission has taken a look at our draft ordinance, and we've also learned from other cities' experiences, especially In working on this draft, our objectives were to address some of the public safety concerns that we have seen or heard about and address those concerns regarding pedestrians, cars, and the riders of the shared vehicles. We wanted to facilitate the micro-mobility economy and the transportation concept and make those options available in our community and also provide some clarity in the regulations for the operators, the riders, our staff, and our citizens, particularly police officers. The state law doesn't accommodate these particular vehicles. It doesn't contain a definition that's a perfect fit for these. So it's been a bit of a challenge for our police officers in determining really what are these. So this ordinance seeks to clarify some of that confusion. The draft ordinance that is before you establishes a non-exclusive franchise, which a franchise is sort of a hybrid between an ordinance and a contract. It establishes a right to use public infrastructure, in this case sidewalks and streets. The ordinance sets forth public safety regulations for the operators and public safety regulations for the riders. We have worked extensively with the operators and, as I said, all these stakeholders to come up with what we have before you, but there are some specific areas where we really need council direction to move further to determine how this ordinance will look. So I guess, assuming that the ordinance itself is a good starting place, there are five particular decision points that I'd like to seek your input on today. So I'll maybe just start going, and if there's one someone wants to stop at, we can do that, but otherwise I'll go through them all and go back to the beginning. So the first one is the number of vehicles deployed. There's a concept in this industry called dynamic capping, where the upper limit on the number of vehicles available in a community is really determined by the market. So we, we set kind of a balance between a set upper limit and dynamic capping by creating a two-hundred-and-fifty-vehicle initial limit. And then we added a dynamic cap model where the operator could come back and apply for more as needed. So that authorization for more vehicles requires a showing that the vehicles are used three times or more on average in that quarter, which is a pretty typical method for determining usage of those vehicles in a community.
Ms. Mylum.
When you say each one was used three times, is that daily or in the quarter?
Daily, on average.
Like, well, I heard three times per quarter, and I'm like, uh.
Oh, that would be very low.
That would be really low. Three times, the average of three times daily in the quarter.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum, yes, three times daily on average in one quarter. So upon that showing, that, for example, if an operator deployed two-hundred-and-fifty of the vehicles and they were able to make that showing, then they would be entitled to a twenty percent increase in their fleet under the franchise. So there's a kind of corollary piece to that. This draft limits the number of franchises available to four, and that's partly to control the number of vehicles on the street and partly to control the amount of administrative work that's required to kind of monitor and address the public safety concerns that are going on, particularly in the clerk's office, who this envisions will administer the franchises. It operates a lot like a license, they're the licensing authority. So this envisions that the clerk's office would administer the franchises. The, there's kind of a proposal on the floor that if we were to have a lower number of franchises available, then each franchise could deploy more vehicles. So the, they, those two issues kind of go together. How many vehicles do we want to, what's the cap, upper limit where we want to set the number of vehicles deployed, at least initially? And how many operators do we want to authorize to use the streets and sidewalks? So those are two things that go together. There's, of course, always the option of an exclusive franchise, which really would require a slightly different process, but that's, of course, an option on the table. So I'll move on. The, there's a provision on page two of the draft where there's a little chart showing kind of a menu of ideas for how the franchise fee could be structured. A franchise fee is not a fee for service, like we think of with an application fee or even really an assessment. It's, it's more like consideration under a contract theory. So it is the value of the right to use the sidewalks and streets. So it doesn't need to reflect a particular city service. It needs to reflect what is the, what is the value of using that infrastructure? There's not really a, there's not a statutory methodology for establishing that, as there might be for other utilities. So ideas on the table are to structure this as a per-vehicle fee, so a dollar fifty cents, thirty-five cents per vehicle, or look at a per-ride franchise fee, so a ten cents or twenty cents a ride. And that's, of course, the difference between those two is one is upfront. It's a set amount that you know ahead of time and you pay that upfront. There's a, the per-ride is after the fact, based on data. It requires a little more administrative work to collect that data and verify that data. The, the upfront payment is certainly simple from the, the standpoint of the franchising authority, that is, the clerk's office. There's an option, of course, to do both, to do a per-vehicle upfront and a per-ride on the back end. The, I, I should say that these decision points are partly because it's really necessary to get the input of you, the policymakers. And also, we've really hammered out a lot of similar issues in working with Lime and Bird to kind of balance their needs and our objectives. And there are very few, in my assessment, outstanding points that we really don't agree on. So however, this is one. The fee for what, the fee for the city's removal and storage of shared vehicles. So if a police officer needs to physically pick up a scooter and move it out of the road and rather than setting it in, back up on the sidewalk, for whatever reason, it's safer or more expedient to take it back to the police station and store that. That situation is going to be rare. We don't want to be in the business of moving these around the city and having to deal with logging them in and checking them out. But in the rare event that we do that, what fee would we charge for that? Currently, our MOU with Lime envisions a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar amount for that service, but our operators have suggested respectively fifty and twenty for that service. So given the overall structure of what we're doing here, two-hundred-and-fifty might be too much, but I don't, we don't exactly know what that is. Finally, the enforcement of speeds or the use of these vehicles in parks. Our proposal is that the operator controls the speed of the vehicles in parks. They can go, I believe, a little over fourteen miles an hour, but in parks, the speed limit, recommended speed limit is eight miles per hour, so a little bit slower in these high traffic areas. We've also recommended geo fences around particular areas, so the playgrounds in our biggest parks, the dog park, I'm forgetting, oh, tennis courts and our special use parks. So some, the Harold Cox Park and places, Generations Plaza and City Hall Plaza. The alternate proposal is that the rider would be responsible for regulating their speed and not going on those areas, in the playgrounds and tennis courts. So those are the areas where I'd ask for your input.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So before I start, a probably hour and a half long line of comments, I wanted to mention that previously, when they were located here, so for about four days or so, I was a Lime juicer. Someone's going to read these minutes and be like, "What the heck was he talking about?" Where I would pick them up and charge them, put them back out. But I really wanted to participate in today's discussion. I haven't done it since they left Meridian because I'm not going to drive to Boise for five bucks. But, and I don't plan on doing it should they ever be back in Meridian again, so that I could feel good and be legal about participating in the discussion and the decision-making for this process. That having been said, I do have some comments for what you're asking here. With the, I, to me, I mean, you all know where I stand on regulating business. I would opt not to in almost any circumstance I could. But I think in, in this case, that there would be an opportunity for it to make sense to have kind of the performance bond that Megan had mentioned in her email, for the costs that the city incurs and having to occasionally deal with them. You had mentioned that the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee may not make sense as, as being too much, especially if we do have another model where we have another revenue source to be able to handle them. To me, again, I go back to my Ford juicing days and myself, and there is an army of people out there who are willing to go out, pick them up, store them, clean them, charge them, and put them back out for five bucks. So to, to contemplate charging two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to pick it up and hold on to it for somebody else to come get it seems a bit excessive. That's why there was kind of some chuckles and some smiles when there was the twenty dollars even mentioned. To me, even that does make sense considering that there are people willing to come and get them from you for only five bucks and do quite a bit more work for that five dollars. There was some, some language in, in the memo, memo that I had some questions about and wanted to discuss. One was the point about when they could be operated, when they had to be picked up and when they could be placed back out by here, this far north. In the winter, it gets dark early and doesn't get light till late. And so if we want to have this as an opportunity for people to use for that last mile, first mile, whatever the lingo is for commutes, then it just wouldn't even be an opportunity in the winter if they have to be picked up within half an hour of sunset and can't be placed out until half an hour before sunrise. So to me, maybe changing that language to daily pickup and redeployment might make more sense. When it comes to the caps, I talked about being able to request a change to the cap quarterly. My worry with quarterly, I was wondering if it would make more sense to possibly do monthly if they were to meet certain benchmarks to be considered for an increase in their cap? If, if they were to have the data that July, you know, the first month of quarter three ends up being their heaviest-use month, but not being able to request an increase until a few months later, really, they could be a year out from being able to take advantage of a cap increase for that heaviest month that they have of July, if maybe August might only be less or even better than Aug, than July, as an example. And then the other thing that I wasn't sure on was beacons. So it's defined and then it's mentioned a couple of times. I, I think the beacons is a, something built into the, the Bird ones. I'm not familiar with it with Lime, so I'm wondering if, if it's not something that's used across the industry, if maybe that should be something defined as when equipped? And maybe you can help me understand what the beacons are? That's all.
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Palmer, the idea of the beacons was brought forth by Bird. That was in the drafts shared with Lime as well. And those are, those are the two operators that we've worked with. The beacons really are a mechanism to establish designated parking areas. Parking is, is to be at either a beacon or next to a bike rack. So it is a method to designate a parking area.
Madam Mayor. So the intent is So the intent is for them not to be allowed anywhere where there isn't either the a beacon or a bike rack? Is a beacon, what is it, a sign? Is it like a electronic device?
I believe it's a small RFID chip that is attached to maybe a bike rack or a pole or a a thing, a piece of infrastructure that would be a safe place for them to park. And as to your question, if would this be the only place that they could park? There are parking restrictions. So wherever they can't be parked on a sidewalk so as to obstruct the five-foot clear pedestrian pathway. But I know the that really the model is for them to be waiting around town. So beacons is certainly an attractive idea as far as kind of corralling them and having a designated place for them to go.
Other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cabbler.
Got some questions, some comments, but it might be beneficial. I think we've got representatives of the two proposed groups here. I mean, is it appropriate for us to hear from them about their thoughts on this and provide some some commentary?
Absolutely, but I'd I'd like the chief to maybe also, I I'm curious. I know that the police department has been involved, and there's a lot of concern on what kind of time that this is gonna demand from our police department. Could you weigh in?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Also, I believe Lime left. I don't see Aaron here. He left about thirty minutes ago and hasn't come back. I have several comments. I have participated in every stakeholder meeting since we put it together because I had expressed an interest. I had some personal biases that I had to overcome as far as seeing scooters in in the city. And if it's something that our community wants, then it's something that we can make happen. Councilman Palmer and I are gonna disagree on a couple things because we tried the free market, and it was a failure. And I expressed my thoughts on where we failed. And that company has not reached out to me as of yet to even address those or overcome those. And although they've been participating in our stakeholder meetings, they don't come forward with any information. They don't provide any comments. In fact, I was provided the comments via third party this afternoon. When we met yesterday with them, they were supposed to provide comments to us. They hadn't. And then they sent those comments out to individual councilmembers last night. And if they had not been forwarded to us via the city clerk, the stakeholder group still would not have those comments. That's troubling to me. On the other hand, there's another company that has reached out to us and has been forthcoming and has expressed a desire to work with us and to ensure that there's no problems within the city. I will tell you that we have a mantra called the Meridian Way, and we expect a prompt, timely response to our citizens. We've created that, and we provide that. And if I receive a call and say, well, that's not our problem, that's that's their company, or they'll come get it in two hours, don't worry about it, that's not acceptable. And we're gonna get the complaints. We need to ensure whatever we put in place is simplified enough that it's not gonna require additional staff time. I know that our neighbors to the east have put a fairly lengthy process in, and they're considering now having to add additional full-time staff members to regulate that industry, which is not what we want. But we want to simplify it to a point where it doesn't require additional staff time. But one thing that I can tell you is that this is beyond the control of the companies is we can't govern poor human behavior. And that poor human behavior is gonna create costs for service for the police department, for code enforcement, for the companies, and the complaints to City Hall. And so we need to ensure that there are some rules to follow that are in place and expectations so we don't create additional concern for us. If we expect us to respond to a call and to take care of it and to remove it or impound the scooter, I do believe that 250 is excessive, but 50 is reasonable based upon the costs that it would cause us to incur. That would be personnel costs. That would be report-writing costs. That would be the time to impound it and put it into evidence. If we could get that done within an hour's time, 50 dollars would be reasonable. Now, sure, you can have a juicer or a charger come get it for for five dollars in two hours. But if it's an ADA violation and the city is aware of it, and we fail to act on it, we could, in fact, be held liable in future grant requests, federal requests, that the government controls. That's concerning to me. It would be reasonable for them to come out and take care of the problem within two hours. But if it's sitting in someone's front lawn, is it reasonable for us to wait two hours? Or do you want us to take care of it? And if we do take care of it, it's staff time, it's cost. Those are the things that we have to talk about. I think we can make it work. I think we can let the companies succeed or fail. But there's one company that has not it it doesn't look promising. And I'm trying to be kind.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, chief, would say one's causing an ADA violation, would every instance require that it be hauled off? Or would that be a rare occasion as opposed to just moving it somewhere where it's not in the way or where it could be appropriate?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, that's a very good question. And if it's an ADA violation, it would just be required to, unless you put some sort of rules in place or some sort of protocols in place, it would just be required for the violation to be resolved. And so it could be moved. But one of the things you have to look at is, where do we remove it to? Do we do we remove it into the street? Do we move it into someone's personal, private property? And now we got someone upset that, well, it's not blocking the sidewalk anymore, but now it's blocking the entranceway of my store, or it's blocking this, you know? Those are the things. So it would not have to be impounded. It could be resolved by merely moving. But with the discussions with these companies, they want to have a two-hour window to come move that. I believe that's where the problem is gonna be, is that we would probably want it moved sooner, and if we did, then it's gonna require staff time to do that. And are we okay with that? Those are the types of questions that we have to discuss and overcome. There is an impact to the city's resources, regardless if we want to believe there's not.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Manley.
Yeah, I agree that 250 dollars is probably excessive. And we're not here to try to make a living off of a small of a business. But we also don't need our taxpayers paying for that business to be able to thrive. So, you know, maybe something along the lines of 50 dollars if it has to be removed, 20 dollars if it can just be moved, and then a daily storage fee, assuming that they would hopefully come get it the same day, but additional, you know, 20 dollars a day until they come get it. Sounds reasonable.
I would have a question if the the group in talking with the two companies that have been involved in the discussion. Have you talked about what other cities have done in the removal? Could could this be another free-market opportunity for towing companies instead of having our police now be responsible for ADA and and making sidewalks accessible and removing things from private property? It's I I can hear that. It's not my job. But it could it be towing companies or these juicers or or something other than our police who would be very?
Madam Mayor, that's that's a good question. I will tell you that the towing industry is not regulated, and we have a lot of issues with that. But also, there are state codes that we have to be aware of, is that in order for a tow company to tow something from private or from public property, it has to have a law enforcement officer authorized in that tow. In order for it to be towed from private property, it has to be properly posted. And then our towing companies are now requiring our private property owners to pay an upfront costs, because they're gonna incur costs that they may not get back. And so we're actually penalizing our business owners, and it was 75 dollars, I don't know what it is now, to come out and and tow a car. And so that's a burden, a cost burden that's being placed upon our citizens for a separate business. So it's a great idea, but it it has its own unintended consequences and state laws that that govern it. Hopefully, I answer that legally. If not, my counsel here can clear it up.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And I'm just trying to think of a a situation of something else that might end up in the way, you know? Like, and the only thing that keeps coming to mind is a trash can. You know, if a trash can were to end up in the middle of the street and somebody calls you and said, moves it out of the way, you're probably gonna put it in the gutter. You're gonna put it on the sidewalk, and you're not gonna leave it where it is in the street, but you're also not gonna haul it off and then call Public Services and say, here's your 250 dollar bill, and come get your trash can. You're just gonna put it in the gutter.
Madam Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, you're correct. And but there also has to be some sort of of practice versus a consequence. And so that is correct, and that's how we would normally do it. However, if the situation was different, whatever, some factor was unique, then it would be declared a nuisance and that we would process it. So I I'm in agreement with you, is that we would just throw it on the gutter and we'd move on. However, there could be some unique circumstances. That's that's not an acceptable response. And if then we have to do something greater, then there should be some mechanism in place to charge for that. So we would have to put in there where, even though we can do that, it's not something we would commonly do, because it eats up staff time, which is exactly what we're trying to prevent in the first place. But there has to be something in there that gives a consequence that's going to penalize both the company for allowing that to happen or compensate us for having to do that for those unique situations.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I agree. And then pondering on it more, I think 50 dollars does make more sense, you know? 250, though, I have absolute faith in in our officers. I spend as much time as I can with them. I I don't want it to look like it could be an opportunity for the city to have a revenue model of, hey, we're gonna get 250 bucks for every one of these that we impound, where 50 bucks is like, it's not really worth it, but it's gonna cover our costs generally if we have to run one back to the station out of the way.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, the only reason why 250 is there is that's what was in the original MOU. And that was something that was discussed without police involvement. So I I I am in agreement with you, but that's why 250 is there.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. La Roberts.
Madam Mayor. Well, and if there's a mechanism in place for the charge of the use of the scooter, is there a way to charge it directly back to the consumer and thus encourage the consumer for more of a proper use of scooter?
I think that's a good question to ask. Bird is in the audience, and and maybe when we ask that representative up, we can we can ask him up that. It's a good question. Mr. Bird.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I I wasn't aware that Boise is is thinking of or has started hiring full-time employees to manage their their e-scooter program in Boise. That 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 causes me for concern. It really does. It it, you know, when we're if that's what it's getting to, where we're having to hire staff members, you know, whether it's code enforcement or police officer, whatever, to go out and manage this at the cost of our taxpayers, that that that's something that we definitely need to look at and discuss, because and that's that's if that is the case, then then the fee that the fees that are being recommended, you know, 50 bucks may be low. Just something, just something, you know, food for thought.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Burnt, I was gonna just follow up. I mean, a lot of the discussion we've had on this topic has not been just about seizing them. I mean, the police would prefer not to seize them. The time that it takes to do that is not really practical. But the reality, and this is this has been also Boise City's experience as well, is that city staff have to stop what they're doing when they observe these obstructing sidewalks, obstructing handicap access, and obstructing si- uh, different public rights of way. And that may be police, that could be parks, that could be public works. I mean, there are folks. So even if you're just moving them all day long from one location on a sidewalk to a place that's less obstructive, that is time and effort that is taken. And that's what we were trying to balance in looking at those, both the fees, not just for the impound, but the fees for operating. And Boise City took the position in in creating some of these, that that is the cost of their doing business with this and having to deal with that. And that's, I think, the offshoot of that they're seeing now, is that it's eventually eats up enough that it becomes enough to justify the need for now another full-time employee just to do that. Even though it's pieces and parts of 50 people moving moving scooters all day long, it's enough that one person really is is justifiable in the cost of trying to do that. And you're right, it does get expensive.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Burnt, so we're kind of stealing CJ's thunder. This is information he gathered from the Boise City Clerk's Office. But I will say that they're set up slightly differently in that their parking enforcement is part of their clerk's office. Their Boise's ordinance is also pretty heavy-handed on the administrative requirements of the city and of the operators. So that was part of our objective in drafting our ordinance, was to make it pretty simple, both for our clerk's office and hopefully for police. The the business model, the nature of the business model and how it is deployed, I think, is the question for police, how that will affect them. But the part that we can control is the administration of the license or the franchise, in this case, to make that simple and make it so that the clerk's office doesn't need to verify every little piece of information provided by the operators, but that we're still working together to make it safe and understand kind of the data that we're dealing with, the value to our citizens, and the the ridership that's actually using these. So that that is contemplated in our ordinance to be much simpler than Boise's. Theirs is working well for them, from what we understand. But this is intended to make it so that hopefully we don't have to hire staff.
Mr. Clerk, did you have comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We don't want to steal your thunder.
I appreciate that. You can steal all of the thunder.
I already did, I'm sorry.
Great, thank you, chief. Nothing really substantive to add, other than with the knowledge that, yes, the Boise City Clerk's Office is looking at hiring an additional full-time employee to manage their program, we took that into account when writing to say we we don't want to do that. The goal is not to do that, to not be as involved, perhaps, as the Boise City Clerk's Office is, unless it becomes necessary after deployment. I think that's one of the messages that they resonated with us, was, right now, we don't have the scooters or the bicycles or the shared vehicles on the streets, and so now is the time to get that right, because after deployment is then you're scrambling to try and get it right after the fact. And so that's one of the lessons that they learned, was while they weren't scrambling after the fact, now they're learning after deployment and after seeing their and after seeing their program work, they are contemplating the additional full-time staff member to manage the program as they have written it. And so we've tried to find a happy medium where hopefully we don't have to do that.
Thank you, CJ. I guess at this time, if we can hear from the Byrd representative, that would be helpful. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Arthur Ordagon. I'm part of the Government Partnerships Team for Byrd. Address would be, I reside in Colorado, but we do business in Boise, and so no address here in Meridian, unfortunately, not yet. But we will have a full-time employee once we launch. One of the big questions that we're really kind of grappling with, or you're grappling with, is the administrative side and the management of scooters. And one of the things that we've learned out of Boise is getting compliance among, in a market with multiple operators. Because what happens in Boise, and I have two, three, four examples of this, is when they have an issue, they have to call multiple operators to get that compliance of, hey, something's in the ADA, they have these kind of concrete slabs and they're having issues of Byrd's in line, being parked on those concrete slabs. So they have to figure out who it is, contact operator, make sure they're compliant. So what we see in these kind of multi-operator markets is kind of a race to the bottom, which happens when there are compliant operators and non-compliant operators. So on the ground, what we see is this private market fight that happens in the app and on the street. So when someone walks up to one of these scooters, it really is how frictionless the app is, who will win the game. And what that means is the different layers in the app are the kind of regulatory framework, whether it's parking, designated parking through the beacons, which are kind of Bluetooth sensors, geo-fence, geo-speeds, different things that have been mentioned here. Those are the different layers that can kind of, or safety tutorials, driver's license verifications, all these add different steps to the app. And if you have those steps, you're going to lose the game because someone is just looking to kind of get going. Once they make the decision, they want to move. And for those operators who want to be compliant with the regulators and create a real partnership and real solutions to these issues, it puts us at a competitive disadvantage. It makes it harder for us, and Byrd is one of those compliant operators, to win the market share. And so we're seeing that, and I'm not shocked to hear that Boise is looking to hire a full-time employee because we are fighting that right now. A compliant operator versus a non-compliant operator, trying to not be dragged down into the race to the bottom. Because if we do those kind of steps, we will lose market share. We see that in a lot of our markets. I can, but, any questions regarding that kind of concept?
Any follow-up, Ms. Laura Roberts?
Madam Mayor, so if I was going to get on a scooter or something, you've got more things in place, is that what you're saying, than your competitor regarding you'd verify my ID, payment method, credit card?
Safety tutorials.
Would you go in a little more depth?
We would like to implement that. What I'm saying is in the markets where we have, where it's more open and it's more free market, huh? Oh, free market, that we have to pull those off because then it makes it harder for us to compete. It puts us at that kind of competitive disadvantage.
Because the user doesn't want to have to go through all those various steps and they're going to go to the device that has the least amount of regulation.
Exactly.
Madam Mayor.
And so that kind of gets to the second point of the number of franchises. What we see, especially in new markets that are trying to grapple with, what does this look like in our city, in Meridian, right? It's novel, no one really knows what it looks like on the ground. We highly recommend doing a pilot with one operator. So you can get scooters on the ground, start getting data. We do a tremendous amount of data sharing. We want to make sure that our regulators know what our business looks like and can make informed decisions. Because what you guys are talking about is exactly it. It's hard to understand these concepts in a vacuum, in concepts, right? If we could get a pilot going six months, nine months, start to get scooters on the ground, start to understand where the issues are, because, so Byrd has been, created this innovative transportation option. We've been operating since September 2017. We know the big buckets of where the issues are, but it varies from city to city, right? Because it might be parking in one, it might be improper sidewalk riding in another. We won't really know until Meridian residents start to utilize this service. And so, but once we start to understand that, then we can start to implement the tools and abilities to solve for those. Right now, it's a big question. And if any operator comes to you and tells you they know what those answers are, they are lying to you. We don't know. But we would like to find out. We would like to develop a real partnership with Meridian to determine what those are and how to solve those.
Madam Mayor, so in the process of doing this, that is something we could add as part of our rules and regulations, for lack of a better term, is you have to have those things available or to access a scooter or something that the city could require. Is that correct, that you would have to have that in place to ride a scooter? A license of, so somebody is responsible, so we know who that citizen is that is saying, I'm responsible for that scooter?
I guess before I ask you to respond to that, those were all elements in place to ride a Lime e-scooter. But you saw kids that were not 18 or older. I don't know how they got credit cards, but you had to have a credit card, you had to have a driver's license, you had to have a helmet. And I don't know anyone that walks around with a helmet in their hand looking for an e-scooter. So it's, but again, those were all requirements, but none of those were followed in a number of incidents. I did see a couple of Lime scooter riders with helmets on, though. And that was Josh Everts.
May I?
And his wife.
Mayor, Councilwoman, the mayor is exactly right, and the chief hit it well. In practice and in law are different things, right? Just because you make it a regulation doesn't mean that it actually, you know, everyone will say they can and will do, but that's what I mean by the compliant, non-compliant, right? We all agree to the rules, and then once we get into what I call the knife fight of the private sector out there, because it is a very hyper-competitive industry, you start to see some of those promises go away.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Yeah, I mean, when you first go to, at least with Lime, I can't remember when I first did a Byrd, I have though, but when you first go to rent one, it's, you have to check the boxes, yes, I'm 18, yes, I have a driver's license, yes, I have, I know you're telling me to wear a helmet, all these things. It's like, you know, we expect people to have insurance, it's the law. You have to have insurance if you're going to drive a car. But the number one ticket that Meridian police write is not having liability insurance. That is a decision by the person who's going to operate it, not by the car manufacturer or ACHD who put the road in. That's the dude who gets behind the wheel and decides to make that decision, knowing what the law is. Madam Mayor.
Mr. President.
Mr. Kavner.
I assume you've had a chance to review the proposed ordinance, and my assumption also is that you've looked at these types of ordinance all across the country. And so I'm hoping you can provide some context to us as a council. Are there any unintended consequences or flags that stick out in this proposal that compares against other municipalities or better practices that we could look to deploy?
Yeah, Mr. President, Councilmember, there are, and I think they were highlighted well here. So I think the franchise fee is a great one, right? Most operators will tell you, we want reasonable low fees, right? We are a private sector business that uses a business model to produce revenue, that gives us the ability to invest in these communities and pay these fees. So the higher they are, the harder it is to pencil the market. Makes it, that's the biggest determining factor whether we will apply and go live here, okay? And so let's kind of go through, like, so the per-vehicle, per-ride. So these are the kind of buckets that we see. And so the per-vehicle, we get that it makes, it's easier on the city, but what it does is it de-incentivizes the operators from increasing the vehicles. Right now, we're talking about an initial deployment of no more than 250, more than 100. But from our calculation and our experience, the Meridian market will see about, should see about 1,000 scooters. That's about the right saturation point for that three rides per day that was mentioned by Emily earlier. And so, but we don't know that. And so, and also determining how many vehicles we release a day is, varies, right? Because there's operational maintenance issues. So even though we may be given 250, one day it might be 240, one day it might be 230, one day it might be 250. Really depends on, you know, because there's that fleet management side. So we really like to see the per-ride fee because what that does, it incentivizes all parties to really target the real goal here. And that's your residents using these things and getting rides, right? So not only is there incentive for the city to help us to educate and make sure that people in the, you know, enforcement, but from us, that is our real goal. And the more rides we see, the bigger of the oversight budget that you guys see. We have not really ever seen the last option, which I think in your, in the ordinance is option, the second option is the mixture of the two, that is what we would consider pretty punitive, right? That you're de-incentivizing the vehicles and attaching a fee to the rides. So we really like to, operators really like to see the per-ride one. The other thing that, and we're, once again, kind of discussed, is the tying the number of vehicles and the number of franchises together. Once again, in a market that this is novel, we're looking to figure out what it looks like in Meridian, having one operator with a higher fleet number is going to be really the best option to figure out what it looks like. Because not only are you going to be comfortable with all the data that you're getting, instead of trying to figure out two, once again, it's always fighting between two operators when you have, trying to get some consistency there. In a pilot, you can really work with one to figure out what that data looks like, compliance, enforcement, all those sorts of things. And we see that as a best practice. And worth mentioning, it's easier to go from one operator market to multiple, once you are working with the information you know, than to put the genie back in the bottle, right? Going from two to one or three to one, it's easier to go to one to two, one to three. So that's a decision that you can make later if you see, oh, your residents are really taking the scooters and we need more than one operator. That's a decision that can be made post the pilot.
Madam Mayor, so it sounds like you are asking us to pilot with just you at this time and not allow any other operators?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, I believe you've already tried with the other operator. I'm saying giving us a shot.
That's what I'm saying. That is what you're implying and asking here.
That is what I'm asking and implying.
Madam Mayor, I would like to know what your, what is the fee that you pay Boise? Do you pay per vehicle or do you pay per ride? And what is that?
$250 per scooter. Madam Mayor, I do not know the, or, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, I do not know the answer to that, but I can get it to you, maybe even.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Clerk.
Councilmember Milam, so the city of Boise for their Stationless Bicycle Share Program, there's a $5,000 annual operator fee, which is essentially the license fee. It's $100 per device, which is an annual device charge, and then it's $20 per device, which is a security deposit fee. So that's per device. So they have three separate fees rolled into one, depending on the number of devices they have.
That $100 or $20 security, is that a deposit, a one-time, or is that an annual?
You may have to, maybe the representative from Byrd knows the answer to that, I don't know.
I believe that's a one-time. That's the performance bond. So to really subsidize the law enforcement moving kind of conversation.
Okay, thank you.
And the operator fee, is that annual?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I would like to say, once again, I think someone else said it, Boise does have pretty heavy-handed in rules and regulations for e-scooters, and that is a concern for that market.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Question for soothsayer, Mr. Clerk, who knows all the answers. Is Boise putting caps then, using this dynamic cap model with their operators they have in Boise as well?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilmember Kavner, with our discussion with the Boise City Clerk's Office, it was my understanding that an operator could have a maximum of 250 devices with no current opportunity to increase that number. And then total number of devices, if you have one or four or five operators, was 750 total. Correct.
Any other questions from council? Any other comments?
No, I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the engagement, certainly through your office and the discussion. So appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur. Emily?
Madam Mayor, I do have a couple other follow-up questions, either for you or Mr. Nary or Mr. Barton. Do we currently regulate speed of bicycles or scooters or anything in our parks?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kavner, no.
Thank you.
I would add, we do regulate the speed of cars in parks, of course.
And I guess we haven't experienced motorized off-road type of things either, so.
Madam Mayor, the, this kind of goes to the question of what are these? Though they're vehicles in that they have wheels and they transport a human being. So that's the definition of vehicle in the Idaho code. It's not a motor vehicle, even though it has a motor. They're really classified as, they're in the same family as the, you see the little toy Jeeps that have a battery?
Power wheels.
Yes. Or a hoverboard, or they're considered toys by the, and they're under the federal consumer protection. So they're really in their own class, which again is, there's kind of that blank in the Idaho code for these.
Mr. Byrd?
Madam Mayor, is the geo-fencing deal, is that possible to regulate speed? I mean, is that something that's easy to do or is that something that's been done?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Byrd, yes, we understand that that is possible. Lime informs us that their technology makes it possible to geo-fence within 10 meters. So there isn't, it isn't a precise location so much as kind of a, an area. We understand that to geo-fence a playground, Byrd has made the commitment that that is possible. The Lime did bring up in that conversation the 10-meter kind of range, margin of error, but our thought is it could just be playground plus 10 meters. So to answer your question, yes.
Madam Mayor, follow-up. I knew that there was the geo-fence, I mean, I remember I was in Portugal and there was a geo-fence where I couldn't, we couldn't go on a Lime bike past a certain, so I knew, I know it's geographic, but I didn't, I wasn't aware that you could actually control the speed within those, like a geo, like a geo, that was my question. I know that there's areas that you can't go past, but like, in those, like, for example, if we put a geo-fence around a park, in a Lime bike or a Byrd bike, whatever, goes inside a park, are we able to control the speed or are they able to control the speed within the parks or designated area through the geo-fencing?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Byrd, I'm sorry, yes, that is possible. That's our understanding from talking to these operators, yeah. I guess I'd add, while I have the floor, that the, our, in looking at the number of vehicles deployed, we do want to balance kind of that supply and demand. We've, one piece of feedback, interestingly, that we've heard from Boise is that sometimes people want to ride one and there's not one available. So there's kind of that balance between they're everywhere, we can't get away from them, there are too many and they're not going to use, versus that people want to use them and we are supplying them with the right number. We're making it possible for that number to happen and still serve the public safety.
And Madam Mayor, just to expand on that just a little bit, so currently the city of Boise has 500 available, there are two operators at 250 each. So the city of Boise right now has licensed 500 devices. So they say on a nice day outside, the clerk's office might get a few calls, hey, where can I find these? I don't see any available and all are in use at that particular moment. And then when it's not so nice outside, there may not be as many in use. But currently the city of Boise has 500 that are available under their license.
So, Mr. Clerk, they call the clerk's office to find out where they are?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Awesome.
CJ's number right on you. CJ's number right on.
Uh-huh.
We talked about that additional resource.
Maybe the cell number.
CJ's personal number on the app.
Mad, Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor? As long as they're calling the Clerk's Office, we're good with that. Hey, I just want to point out a couple more things. Um, and, and I know that some of the stakeholders, um, in our discussions, you know, we might be in a disagreement as far as speed in the parks. I know that it was really important to, to parks, to talk about the speed and reducing the speeds. I will tell you that speeds are not the issue that we have in the parks, but I think they were kind of like, well, maybe they'll go slower, but you got bark, you got bikes and other scooters that are also unregulated. Where our concerns are, that we've had in the parks, are the races, regardless of what, what speed they're going, they're racing side by side by side by side by side, and, um, creating a hazard for people. That's what I was alluding to as far as you can't police bad human behavior. But one of the other things I want to point out, um, as we're talking about speeds, the speed regulated in the parks under city code is 15 miles per hour, but there's also Section 4 in there that talks about vehicles are only allowed on the roadways. And so, these scooters are being driven in the parks, on the grass, on the playgrounds, on the other plazas, on the courts. And under state code, under city code, because they're a vehicle, they can only be lawfully driven on the roads. And so that's why we were talking about some geofencing and stuff. And so, a-again, poor human behavior creates issues. Those issues create calls for service to your office, to my office, to the Clerk's Office. Just something we need to be aware of.
Madam Mayor, I, a follow-up to that, um, it's as, again, it's, it's essentially a toy, so it can go on the roads, but it could actually go on the pathways and, um, the sidewalks inside the park, which are not the same as an ACHD-owned sidewalk, but, um, the intent really is to allow them there, but to regulate the speed down for safety.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm reading the code right here, and I think there might be a conflict, though. It says, "Vehicles confined to roads. No person shall drive any vehicle, whether motorized or unmotorized, in any area except the paved park road, or parking areas, or such other areas as specifically designed by the director as a parking or driving area." That's city code.
Oh, possible conflict. Arthur, I, I think you were going to, to maybe enlighten us on a couple of, some of the, um, capabilities that these e-scooters have.
Madam Mayor, council, sure, I can talk about those. You were talking about geofences, and we are able to do geo-speeds, no park, no rides. Once again, those are the type of layers in the app that if there's a compliant, non-compliant, that can make it difficult, right? If one ha, one has a geofence around a certain park and another does not, that impacts the rider experience, right? Because if you're riding a Bird at, you know, a limited eight miles an hour speed, and you see someone shooting by the line, that, that causes concern. But one of the things I wanted was, I was, wanted to talk about is, uh...
The apps will show where they are, right?
Uh-huh. The apps do show where they are, absolutely. Is the demand of, like, that Boise has people clamoring, calling for where they are, and that's a direct result of that hard cap. Because they set that cap of 250 without understanding what scooters look like in the market, and what we see is high utilization, meaning a lot of people are using them, but not enough to supply that market, even with two providers at 250. And so, that is why we talk about that dynamic fleet, making sure that we start with an initial deployment of a significant number. That's why I think the 500 is more, um, appropriate for this market than the 250. But once we have that dynamic fleet, seeing how the 500 operates, see, and using that three rides per vehicle as our guide, if we're above that three, we see sometimes in most markets, uh, two-ride utilization. If we're above two, we get an increase. If we're below one, which is what, uh, most e-bikes are at, then we decrease. But starting with a, uh, because e-scooters need the demand and the convenience to be used. Most people do not use the app to go find scooters, some do, but what we find is most people use scooters when they walk up to them. They're like, oh, I've seen this, I've heard about this, I want to use it. And so having the right concentration and the right amount of, uh, vehicles is really important to making this program work.
Robert, will you go out, someone's out there looking for things, so.
They're looking for the art, I guess.
Mr. Cavanagh. Sorry for the interruption.
That's right. I wanted to make sure you had a chance to finish your point.
Nope, that was.
Appreciate you coming back up, Arthur.
Yeah.
I hear what you're saying about the ability to scale up, and certainly I think that makes sense. June, July, August, September, warm days, people are, are going to be wanting to utilize these as much as possible, which is great. The concern comes in January, February, March, when it's snowy, and now we've got, with your example, 500 scooters per operator, so there's a thousand scooters that are out there that are, that aren't being used, that become more of a nuisance, one for our citizens, two for law enforcement. So, wh-what is your proposal to give the city some type of assurance that if they aren't being used, if they're at that one per ride per day, that they're being removed from our streets?
Madam Mayor, Councilman, um, great question. Uh, one of the things, that's why we like the dynamic fleet, and I liked, uh, Councilman and Palmer's suggestion of using the dynamic fleet on a monthly versus quarterly for that kind of iterative and more up-to-date, uh, understanding of where our fleet lies. But one of the things that Bird does that no other operator does, is that we pick up every one of our birds every night, and then rebalance them every, every morning. So from seven, normally it's from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. At 9:00 PM, they shut off on the app and turn it into a bounty for our chargers, which is, um, the chargers are the people who pick them up, inspect them, maintain them, make sure they're in good work in order, bring them home, charge them, and then put them into pre-designated nests by 7:00 AM the next morning. And if they do that whole process, they get between $5 and $20.
Sure.
And we can talk about that dynamic pricing otherwise. But on those kind of snow events, or in the winter, we have the ability to have our, to prevent, um, the chargers from releasing a certain amount of, uh, birds for that day. So if it's just a cold day and no one's using it, if we had the ability to say, at a fleet of 500 or 1,000, we can release 200, 300. So we, we have the ability to manage that fleet because we pick them up every night and rebalance every day.
Madam Mayor, follow, I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying. I think from a, from a business decision, it sounds like you've got a plan to operate the business, but at the same time, you're investing a significant amount of money in these scooters, and they're not earning you any revenue if they're sitting in a storage center someplace. So, again, it goes back to, it sounds like we've got a really good plan in place, and honestly, I'm supportive of, of reviewing this monthly as opposed to quarterly, for what it's worth, to increase. But what I, I still have yet to see is a mechanism for the city to decrease.
Madam Mayor, uh, Councilman, that's part of the dynamic fleet model. So if we're above that two rides per day, or three, we can increase. If we're below one, we decrease.
Thank you, Arthur, I appreciate it.
Any other questions for Arthur, while we have him up here?
I'm sure we'll find another reason to bring him back.
Yeah. We probably will find more.
Right.
Yes, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I know this is, this has gone on long, but the chief has touched on a couple things, and either Emily or the chief or Bill, it sounds like we've had a committee that has been working on this, and I just was hoping maybe you could summarize some of the comments or thoughts or recommendations that have come out, that committee. If all of those comments are captured here in, in your memo, that's great. But I heard some things from the chief that at least I didn't see were necessarily captured in the memo, and I wanted to make sure that, at least we as a body, because we've been really clunky in this process, I want to make sure that we've got all of the information in front of us before we potentially are asked to make a decision.
Um, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, I don't know that I can speak for everyone on the committee. I think, um, it was definitely, it's been a learning process for all of us. It's certainly, this is a, this is a different business model than, there's really no analogy. So, um, kind of, learning how it works and coming around to the philosophy of, this is, this is a transportation option for our citizens. So if you look at it from that perspective, um, it's, there, there are the public safety concerns, there are the, you know, flooding of the market, and they're everywhere, and they're getting on everyone's nerves, kind of concerns, but when it works, when everything is in balance, it really is an interesting way to approach transportation. So that's kind of, and maybe that's just me, but that's, um, that's one outcome of this process, is really just learning how it can work. I guess to your point, um, you were talking about how we're, that, to that balance, talking about how we can ratchet back when there's too many, that really is an argument for that per-vehicle up, pay upfront model. Because that, it, not, not as an incentive, but it really is a check on use, you know, deploy what you can use. So there, the, as I stated earlier, these five kind of outstanding points, I think there are still some things that need to be polished, and this discussion today, we've kind of identified some areas that we need to look at again. But these five areas are really where we do need some guidance. I think staff has some recommendations with possibly the, um, well, we have some recommendations on each of these, but we do need to know really, assuming the ordinance is the way council wants to go, we need to know how these things look, how we want this to look in our community. They, they are pretty interconnected, most of them, so changing one changes other aspects of the ordinance, so it's, um, it is just a draft, but having that input would be really helpful. I just thought of another thing. The parks, the Parks Commission really, um, put some thought into the provisions that are relevant to parks and pathways, and, um, I know that Kim spoke with, um, Nampa Meridian more than once to kind of figure out their, um, concerns, if any, they really don't have any. But the, our Citizen Commission did take a look at that and kind of identify those issues with regard to safety in the parks.
Any, any other questions at this point? Other co, any other comments from any of the members of the, the group looking at this?
Madam Mayor, I, I guess Emily is correct in that there might be some differences of, of thoughts. There wasn't, there hasn't been any, and it's just been, um, discussions, but, um, just my personal, my personal opinion. And, uh, I'll answer any questions that Mr. Cavanagh may have. Without getting into specifics, there has been one company that has continued to fail through this entire process, and one company hasn't. And we have two other companies out there floating around now, Spin, and I believe it's Spin, Snap or Spin or something, and Razor. And then I'm told that there's three other companies out there that are in the wind. We got to get this right. We already did it once, it was clunky, it failed. We got to take this slow and, and make it work for our citizens. I think we got a pretty good plan in place. I would only go with one, but if you went with two, I think you could make it work, let them fail again on their own. But I think we're ready to go. I do know that there's some, one company thinks one way on fees, another company thinks another way on fees, it's time for us to just decide what they're going to be, and, and move forward. But I know I shared some other things that may not have been in that memo, so I would, uh, Madam Mayor, I defer to Councilman Cavanagh to make sure that I've covered those, or if he needs additional, I can provide that probably too.
I, I will say that our group has, um, met with the attitude of how can we make this work? The clunkiness was not on the city part. We did have a, a deployment that, that didn't meet any of the, the, um, agreements that were out there, and, um, it did, I, I guess, uh, the result of that was bringing everyone to the table to have these conversations, which should have happened, um, not on the, the word of an operator that was going to, um, come to our community, but to, to think it through the way this group has. So I'd like to thank those that have been working on this, and the diversity of opinion that has been around the table. That has been very important. You can't all be like-minded to get a good policy, and so that, that is greatly appreciated. And I know a lot of work has gone into it. And Emily, your, your summary that you provided the, the council last month, um, what you've given to, uh, the, the two entities that have been indicating an interest in working with the City of Meridian, has been a, awesome. And so have appreciated the approach of this work group that has been trying to, to do what was right for our citizens, um, to offer an alternative, um, transportation option, because that is how the, these are utilized in other communities. But to make sure it's, it's the right thing for our community, and it's, it's safe, um, for the users as well. So, um, any other questions or comments? There also, we will be seeking anything that you might think of that you haven't yet, to, to get to Emily, but anything, anything further?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh.
What do you, what, what do you want from, from us? You've, you've provided some things, I've heard you, you're looking for feedback, so I don't know, Madam Mayor, when you want, when you want us to do that, or how you want us to convey that.
I, I think the initial thoughts would be appreciated tonight.
So, Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm happy to, to start if everyone's okay with that. I guess here's, here's my, my take on this, is that we got to make this as, as simple as possible. I think, um, complicating this only is going to create more challenges for the operators, more challenges for our staff, so it's easier the better. Uh, I've tried to take some notes, kind of taking into some feedback and kind of the ongoing conversation. So here's just my little thought to the questions, at least, Emily, that you have, have proposed, and, and I've got some thoughts about the language that maybe needs to be tweaked as well, but that's a conversation for another day. So I'm supportive of this di, dynamic cap model. I, as I mentioned earlier, I think it could be reviewed monthly as opposed to quarterly. I think that gives us better protections, both in terms of scaling up when there's higher demand, and more importantly, scaling down when there is lower demand. I'm supportive of the 250, I'm not opposed to increasing that for, to 300. I'm not as supportive of increasing the number of franchisees to three or four, I think two is sufficient, um, and then perhaps in the language, there's an opportunity for a new operator to come before the council, or perhaps we review this, you know, every six months or every year. I've really heard loud and clear the comments from the chief, which I think are, are troubling for us as a council to maybe even approving, you know, a franchisee that has already had so many challenges in our community. So that's a piece I think that we've got to have a, a larger discussion about, but I think two, um, probably makes the most sense. On the fee, I think a cost per scooter per month ties directly to the dynamic cap. This, asking the operators to provide us how many rides per month, to me, I think, again, just, just complicates things. So a cost per scooter per month, again, whatever we determine that to be to meet the needs of the city, um, I may be alone on this. I actually support the $250 fee to remove scooters. That needs to be a stick to encourage private business to do what's right, and encourage their riders to return these in the appropriate place. I believe it's something that we would rarely, if ever, charge, um, and I think to have a, a fairly strong stick is in the best interest of our citizens. When it comes to enforcement of speeds of use in parks, if we're applying the same metrics to our taxpayers who are bringing scooters into our parks, I'm great with that, but what I don't think we want to create is two classes of citizens, uh, one who own and one who's going through these services. A quick search in the Google machine showed that I can purchase for $250 a scooter that goes 18 miles an hour, that I could ride in our parks and be fine. Why we would penalize an operator who's, um, caring and maintaining for, for these types of, of, uh, scooters, to me, seems to, I don't know, not gel. So, um, that's my take. Like I said, I'm happy to connect with you with some other thoughts about when these can operate, when they can't, but at least at the decision points that you've asked for feedback tonight, I wanted to at least let you know where I'm coming from.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Bird?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm also in favor of a type of dynamic cap model. I think that makes sense. Number of franchisees, of, of franchisees available. I would like to start off with one, but I don't necessarily feel like it, it needs to be exclusive. Right now, Bird is, seems like they're competent, they've been able to work, they're, they're team players, been able to work well with their staff, and so that's, that, that means a lot. I echo what the chief has said, I don't necessarily think it should be exclusive. But right now, I feel between, I, I'm just not a big fan of Bird. They were, they spoke pretty, you know, initially. Excuse me, lime, yes, lime, exactly, lime. You, you knew what I was talking about. They, they, you're like, phew. They, they, I think they spoke pretty initially, but they didn't come through and they've been difficult to work with. Just, just my two cents. As far as a fee, I don't necessarily care how we recoup those fees. There are folks who have a lot more experience in this that can figure that out. I do believe that that fee should equate to, at some point, cover the cost of a full-time employee. If Boise is needing to hire a full-time employee to manage this and they have 500 scooters, sounds like Bird is saying that they want 1,000. This, this market's gonna, this gonna, is going to accommodate 1,000 scooters. Is that going to be two full-time employees? I don't believe that our taxpayer should burden, have the burden of the cost of, of like a, something that we're, a, 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 a private business model that Bird and other e-scooters oper, um, use. So I, whatever that fee is, you guys are gonna figure that out, makes sense. I have full faith in that's gonna happen, but it needs to cover a cost. It needs to be enough to cover the cost of a full-time employee, because it's gonna happen. Whether it's by April or May, you're probably gonna see that that's gonna be needed. I'm with Councilman Cavanagh on this. I, I, I believe, you know, I think that we should put some teeth on the cost or the fee that we, that we charge for the removal and storage of shared vehicles, for the exact same reasons that Councilman Cavanagh said. We put teeth on it, they're gonna pay attention to more. I mean, they're not gonna wanna pay these fees, they're going to do more to make sure that that doesn't happen. So I, I, I suggest more teeth, the better. Also for geo-fences for all parks. If we're going to allow, and I think that we should allow these to be written in parks, I mean, these are fun. And I don't, I don't wanna be the old Grinch who's like, you know, we're gonna provide you scooters, but you can't ride them and have fun. I don't wanna be that guy, who wants to be that guy? But at the same time, I believe that, you know, I don't want to have these kiddos flying down a cliner, a cliner path and, you know, likelihood maybe being underage, not at driving, at a driving age, and have them not be aware of the, of their surroundings because of their lack of experience and getting themselves into trouble and create a hazard for others. And so I do believe creating a, some type of a geo-fence that controls the speed in parks makes sense. I think I covered it.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
Ms. Malum?
We should've just done these one at a time. I'm good with the dynamic cap model. I, you know, I like, I think it's good to have a certain amount initially, but if their business is doing great and our citizens want more scooters, then, then they should be able to grow that and, and the monthly rather than quarterly reporting.
Yes, I agree.
Number of franchisees, I don't think we should necessarily limit that. I think we can decide on a one-by-one basis if, if there's an application that we want to approve. I, I don't think we should limit ourselves upfront. Franchise fee, I, I'm good, it's at $250, that was good then, and I think that's good now. And we shouldn't waste admin time calculating how many rides on their part or on ours. Removal and storage, I'm pretty flexible on that, so, you know, I don't, I don't know that it has to be $250. I don't know that having it that steep is going to make people stop parking it unless they're, unless they're able to charge the user for that. So $100 or something more reasonable. I just wanna make sure that it covers all staff time and any other expenses that we might incur. Enforcement of speeds in parks, I, I believe that that is just around specific areas, like around the playground, which I'm good with. I don't think that we necessarily need speed restrictions through the entire park, just to those special areas. We do need to make sure that little kids aren't being run over, but if they wanna ride around the backside of the park where nobody's at, I don't have a problem with them going full speed. I also, I, I believe there was somewhere in there that talks about 75% of the money that we get will use specifically towards Bird, or not Bird, but Vespo, whatever it is, whether it's marketing or improvements or stuff. I don't think we should necessarily have that in there hard, at 75%, because we might have to use some of that money for administration or for, you know, an employee or whatever else needs. And I think it could be, it's a good intention, and I, and I like that we're gonna put up, you know, we, we should have signs in certain places, but I don't think that it should necessarily be part of the contract. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Ms. Laura Roberts?
Madam Mayor, I'm probably not gonna have as much feedback as the others, because I really think that at this point, we should go with one vendor and do another test. And there's so many variables here that we don't have answers to. I'm sorry for the sidebar, but I think that our city clerk that could end up with a lot of responsibility hasn't seen reports, hasn't seen how it could impact staff and things like that. And I think there's other information that we need before we can really make a decision. And I think the bottom line is, I really don't wanna see an increase on our police. How, I really wanna see how we're gonna monitor this, that it has the least impact on our staff and particularly the police. So I think we also need to see if we can make sure that part of the agreement to even do a test is if you have not plugged in a driver's license and a scooter, the scooter does, or the bike, whatever it is, does not work. But we need that information, we need to be able to go back to the citizen that isn't behaving properly and hold them accountable, or have it shut off, or whatever the device is. I think there's still just too many variables, and maybe I was left with a very bad taste in my mouth from the previous vendor, but I think we need to do, figure out how to do a test and make sure that it's done right before we jump fully into it and say, let's go for this. So I would go, I, my recommendation is one vendor, two, no more than 250 initially, that we can ramp up as things are going well, and that we don't make a decision on fees until we really know how those are gonna impact our employees.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
Madam Mayor, Chief, anybody? Do you have to be 18, wear a helmet, and have a driver's license to operate one that you own yourself?
Madam Mayor, the state code says you can have a driver's license at 15 with gradual restrictions, daylight, alone, that sort of thing. Under the Idaho helmet law, you have to have one under the age of 18. Over 18, as an adult, you can make that choice on your own. And I will tell you, on the police perspective, we, we don't have an opinion on the helmet. That's a decision that you need to make as a, as a user. We're not gonna enforce that. And that's the, the silly thing in that you put that requirement in, in the app, who's enforcing that? No one. So why put it in there? So that's, that's our thoughts on it.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
As if there was any doubt as to where I was standing on it. I think the only one that I could even bring myself to vote for is if we did, you know, like a 10 cent per ride. But, you know, at 250 bucks per unit with a 250 unit deployment, that's over $62,000. Understanding is it's written, 75% of that's to go towards other things. But if, you know, if we were to apply all that towards some future full-time city employee, fully loaded, there's no way we'd pay somebody 60 grand to move these things out of the way or manage the program. That'd be a full-time job I'd take. Councilman Burgess, I guess, I comment, when it comes to the speed limitations. I agree that the use of them in a park would be a great idea. I, I was riding a bird along the Green Bell headed towards the stadium for a football game, which I didn't realize at the time that there weren't gonna be anyone the game got over to go back to the other end of downtown. But it was a great ride there, but as soon as I hit a certain part of campus, it started binging at me, and I nearly flew all over the front of it, because it just, eight miles an hour. Went from 15 to, and it's hard to, you know, stop a train. 270-pound guy on a scooter doesn't like to go from 15 to eight instantly. But eight, while it seems fast, I, I don't know, I, I don't know. It said that it was eight, but I don't know if it's because I was so big or what. But it, I mean, people that were my size and bigger were walking faster than me, and I'm like trying to keep this thing going. So I, I, I don't know how consistent, or if the scooter was weird or whatever, but I feel like it's almost a safety issue by limiting those things. But a, a, at least to start, see how, you know, put up signs, hey, don't be dumb on a scooter, go slower when you're in the park, kind of thing, to try and see how it goes before and, you know, forcing them to do the electronic speed enforcement thing. But I, I, I just, I really struggle with, you know, whether it's a buck a day or 250 for a year for a scooter. That is a, a huge cost to a business trying out a new market. Well, one last thing to quote my favorite superhero, Ronald Reagan. He said, "If it moves, tax it. If it keeps moving, regulate it. If it stops moving, subsidize it." Obviously not supporting that idea, but that's what we're doing here today.
Mr. Porton?
Madam Mayor? Emily, this, it's really well done. I mean, kinda go back to the reason things might not have gone well end of last year is we didn't have this work done. And, and you've done a phenomenal job leading this group to create this structure to try and make this program be successful. So I can't say it enough, going through this is really what's necessary. So, and I, I feel like getting this ordinance or unordnance passed soon, less than 60 days before March is over, is critical, regardless of what's in that final form. But, but this is one big missing piece that, that we certainly need. And it's a lot of trade-offs. As I hear the discussion, it's trade-offs, and, and chiefs hit most of them on the head that if we're concerned just solely with public safety, we wouldn't have e-scooters. Problem solved. That's one way to address that. The trade-off is, is we're denying the public this transportation opportunity, so no answer's perfect. And here in this exchange of discussions, it just makes that more clear. My initial perception, and this will change perhaps as discussion continues with the next draft of this. Exclusive franchise concept we utilize to facilitate a large capital infrastructure investment where you can't have otherwise existing competition, utilities are the most common ones. This isn't really that. This isn't one that seems to necessitate such a capital investment that only one could be permitted in order to recoup their capital costs. So the, the competition seems to make sense. Again, the ordinance is the key that makes this successful, is whether there's one, two, three, or four who can survive within their own economic model and at all times be compliant with our ordinance. Again, if you're compliant with the ordinance in all respects, hats off to you. And if, and if the market allows two, three, or four to do that successfully, then, you know, we don't, I don't have any concern with that. One part of the ordinance that you've got in there is the revocation provision, which, you know, allows, not only does the city grant a franchise, but the city retains the right to revoke a franchise and revoke that opportunity to provide the service if you don't comply with the ordinance, which is a key part of that. So the, the 250 with the dynamic cap seems to make sense. It provides some capacity perhaps for some initial competition. It seems to be a more fair way to start such a program. Again, it's trade-offs, might be a little clumsy to have two users, but it also doesn't inhibit the second-to-market to not have as many app downloads and, and users and really let the, the market drive what, what rises to the top. And we'll, and we'll learn from each of these users and who operates in compliance and who doesn't, who's responsive, who's not. The franchise fee, again, the intent of the fee is merely to recapture the additional cost to the city created by the program. I think Genesis had a good point of, of removing that designation of 75%, 25% to those particular uses. Uses, I think, a more broader provision really is 100% of the revenue generated by the, generated by the city is hopefully utilized to offset the costs incurred by monitoring this program. The manner in which we choose to do that is really up to the city. Which goes back to what the franchise fee is, a dollar per vehicle versus 10 cents per ride. It's all premised upon trying to recapture those costs and what best does that. Another trade-off, you brought up a great point, Emily, is if you want to incentivize reducing fleet at a time of low demand, the $1 per vehicle per day, does that better than the 10 cents per mile? I don't have a head around what's the best way to, what's the best franchise fee necessarily? Whatever it would be, it would be that which best captures the revenue stream to offset our costs. Which is, again, kinda crystal ball, we don't know. But once we get this going, we're gonna learn a lot and we're gonna make adjustments. The franchise fee might be one thing to adjust. So, you know, the dollar, I think it was the dollar per day per vehicle, right? Easier to administer, less reporting perhaps, I lean that way. I think I heard a couple of other council members share that might be a preference as well, so. The city of removal and storage, the way it's drafted, it's two hours and after two hours, we get it. I think the, the data's gonna show how common that problem is. I bet it's extremely rare, and I would bet it's so extremely rare that a $250 fee would be appropriate. My hope would be it would never be assessed. And, and each applicant would have great incentive to not allow it to be assessed. If their program is set up to allow a two-hour recovery of the vehicle, or of the scooter, then it's probably not an issue. But that's kind of initial perception on the, the storage fee. And then the speeds, again, more data would be provided and air on the side of the rider being responsible. Similar to they could be reckless with their own skateboards and bicycles, that decision might prove to be wrong. In the trade-off analysis, the, the, the new accidents created by scooters might far outweigh the liberty of driving at your own speed. And we come back and say, wow, we should amend this and require, and so we do. What I don't, what I don't wanna do is overanalyze it to death to the point of it doesn't get a chance to launch and, and stumble and ultimately survive. So I think the program's gonna work great, again, because you've got an ordinance with how these, kind of rules of the road, the bones to it, which helps the ultimate operators be successful. You're gonna make a business decision to come in this market, every operator understands these are the requirements and in order to be successful in our city, so. 250 dynamic cap, four franchisees is fine. I don't know, again, whether there's a, is there an argument of a hard cap of total number of scooters? It's not one of the discussions, right? So if you have eight companies with 250 each, is that a concern? That there might be 2,000 scooters? It might not be, but, so, there, let me see. That was, yeah, it's, the monthly, the monthly adjustment seems fine. You know, the quicker they can pivot, the better. I don't know why we would... I don't know why we would, unless there's a unique administrative cost that is created by that, and they're very well maybe. So if you want a quicker pivot on increasing and decreasing, it might increase the franchise fee. Because again, the whole point of the fee is to recapture the cost created by the program. And nothing more, nothing less. I think that's, that's my list.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not necessarily, but there were some common themes and, and I, I would probably add because it, it does, um, the comment that these programs will be operated by the lowest denominator concerns me. So if we set expectations and they're not adhered to, then what? So if the then what question, because we want to reward good behavior and not get to the lowest denominator, um, way of operating in our community. And I, I, I guess if the, the group can really have a discussion around that and, and bring back something to council and, and maybe even ask the operators that we have been discussing with, what would that look like? Um, how can, how can that happen?
Great idea.
Okay? So I, I guess the fifty-million-dollar question is, when will you be back with this?
Um, Madam Mayor, members of council, I would anticipate that we'd be back, likely not next week, but maybe in the next two or three weeks with the, with the proposed ordinance. Our, we've, we have done a lot of outreach and we can continue that with our stakeholders, but as far as the general public, um, this is probably their first introduction to it. So I don't know if there's, um, um, particular process you want us to follow as far as outreach. We, one of, the statute regarding franchises does say that the franchise ordinance can be effective thirty days after its introduction, and I don't think that today is its introduction, so I would interpret that to mean the first reading. So whenever it starts, that process will be at least thirty days long. So if that incorporates some public input in that thirty-day period, that, that might just be built in.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Portman?
Would it be timely to have a, a new draft ordinance, perhaps February fifth, and have it as a first read? Understanding we very well might not take action on it, there may be changes following from that.
Or bring something back on the twenty-second and, and give an opportunity for the February fifth to, to resemble something more along the lines of you want to have published for public comment. Is that doable?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, again, Emily, Robert, CJ.
Good job.
Chief, please extend our, our thanks to those that have been involved in the conversation and, and Arthur, thank you for joining us and, and helping fill in some of the gaps of our conversation. Because if we didn't have facts, we might have made them up, so we appreciate you being here. Anything further for the council?
No. Thanks, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Emily.
Thanks, Bird, appreciate it.
Arthur, Jason, appreciate it.
Okay, item eight B or eight C, yes?
Is it possible we could take a brief break to maybe let council grab dinner or use the restroom before we jump into the rest of the agenda?
You bet. Well, I figured it wasn't nine o'clock yet, so, but I guess we did start at three. So I.
Madam Mayor, I'm so sorry, especially because you're taking a break, but we do have an existing MOU with Lyme and there's a sixty-day termination provision. I think it's necessary to do that if we're adopting an ordinance just from a practical standpoint. So would you allow me to initiate that termination process?
Yes.
All right. I will.
Yes.
Move forward. Great, thank you. Sorry.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Portman?
Yeah, sorry to booger it up. Is, like, by doing that, we're also setting the, the effective date of our intended new ordinance that we don't want a gap. Would you agree?
Um, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Portman, I, I think since we're kind of in the winter season anyway, it's effectively suspended, um, and they're, they are working with us to suspend their program in light of kind of the odd rollout. So I'm not sure that it would have an effect either way, but you're right, that it would leave nothing. It would leave a void. However, I think we, if we are, um, looking at about a March, um, the first week of March, effective date of the ordinance, the timing is pretty good.
Okay, so I, I guess I would appreciate a motion.
Um, Madam Mayor, you can't take action on this, so we could put it on the agenda for next week.
You can bring it back next week.
Okay, great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and with that piece, we will go ahead and recess to, at seven o'clock. We'll reconvene. And, and people will reconvene in ten minutes.
I'll just.
Do it.
Thank you. Well, we'll go ahead and reconvene this meeting. Council, if there's no opposition, I'd like to move E ahead of C so our police and his dad can go enjoy the rest of the evening. So, I will go ahead and, any, any concerns?
Nope.
Okay. I will go ahead and ask our chief to start the conversation on E, on the Idaho Humane Society. There were a couple of questions that came up at our last meeting, and I think you've watched it.
Yes, we're good. Madam Mayor, council, I wasn't sure you wanted to hear from me quite so soon, so I appreciate that. Last week, there was a beginning of a discussion on a budget amendment that's in front of you for approximately $9,500. And there was two council members who were absent last week, I believe, and so it's nice to have the full body here so we can have this discussion. I'm going to keep it, I know this is hard to believe, I'm going to try to keep it fairly brief, and then just really defer to any questions that you may have. We have been using animal control Idaho Humane Society for, I believe, we're going on the fifth year. Contract services, they provide us with animal control services in our city under a contract, and they cover all animal needs, dogs, cats, goats, chickens, horses, cows, whatever comes in front of us, they deal with it. They also deal with the non-call after-hours status as well. I know that there's been some questions about complaints in the past. I can tell you that in the five years that we've been dealing with them, I've had two complaints, so that's pretty good odds. That doesn't mean that there's more, that there's not more, but I've only received two and that we've dealt with them. As far as patrol standpoint, we don't have any complaints. They've been there for us. Last year's budget was $381,000, 132, was FY18 budget. We did not add an increase for FY19 because the information did not get to us soon enough for the budget workshop, so we left it the same, 381,000 and change. We also were in the process of watching IHS purchase, or not purchase, but to build a new facility, and we put together a stakeholder meeting to start talking about the future of IHS. And in those stakeholder meetings, we finally got something that we never got before, and that was transparency and a look at what other people were paying, how they calculate all that. So essentially, what they do is they calculate the population and the cost per service, and I know this is kind of hard to believe, but Meridian is the second most popular user in the Valley. We average about 21% as far as cost per service and population compared to the rest of our partners. The other partners with IHS are Boise, unincorporated county, Eagle, Kuna, and Garden City. Star's not a part of IHS. Right now, they're the only resource that we have to provide animal control services in the Valley, or for the city. And so I'm asking you for the monies to cover FY19 costs. FY19 costs are a 2.5% increase.
What's your?
That 2.5% increase over the last year's amount of 381 equates to 396.60, or what the budget amendment in front of you today is for, it's 95 something, 95.28. That's how we arrive at the numbers that we're requesting today. The goal was to have a single contract for all participants. That was the thought process, but, sorry, Bill, but when we got all the attorneys involved, they all wanted to have their own unique contract. And it's not, it's not us, it's everybody. Our goal is to still try to have one contract, but there's some uniqueness, in fairness, there's some uniqueness that they want to cover. This is what needs to be covered for Meridian, this is what needs to be covered for Boise. But they also shared with us what each other entity is paying, which we've never known in the past, and I have those in front of you, or I may have those in front of me as well, if you want those figures. The contract is going through the final legal review. We're done on our end, we kicked it back into IHS. It's going to come in front of you requesting you to authorize the mayor to sign it, but I can't ask you to authorize the mayor to sign it until I can financially cover it. And so that's the purpose of the request for the budget amendment. I think I heard a yeah. Boise City is 923,723. Ada County is 360. Kuna is 89, 947. Eagle, 107, 491. Garden City, 61, 546. When you look at the average use, Boise, 54%, Meridian, 21%, Ada County, 11%, Kuna, 5%, Eagle, 5.5%, and Garden City, 3.1%. The request in front of you today is to only cover FY19. We're in the process of deciding what the future's going to look like, but there is limited options. I have had finance working on a cost analysis study to see what it would cost if we did it ourselves. There's a meeting scheduled for February 11th with finance and myself and various stakeholders to discuss those findings. That's where we're at. So I guess I'll, I'm requesting approval for the $9,500 to get us through this year because we don't have any other options, and then if you want to share or ask questions about where do we go from there, I'll answer those.
Thank you, Chief.
None of the numbers.
Any questions at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Chief, the, the cost increase, not, our citizens don't get any extra added value. This is just what the Humane Society has determined is an increase in cost, and that gets passed along to us.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, it is an incre, that is correct statement, but it's based upon the population increase and the amount of calls for service increase. We have seen a, and I looked at the figures over the last three years, it looks like we get, we increase about 100 calls for service per year, change. So it started out about 1,400, then it was 1,500, then it was 1,600. Every year, it seems to be getting just a little bit, because we're growing. So, yes, same services, cost increase due to their calculations is population and cost for service-based.
Madam Mayor, question again for you, Chief, for either you or Mr. Nary. If council doesn't approve this, what happens?
You're going to have, Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, come August or September, you're going to have the Wild West of animals in Meridian, unless you want police officers doing it at their wages with their cars. We've tried that before, it doesn't work very well.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Would you choose scooters or animals?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton.
You don't have to answer that.
I'm going to, I'm just going to make a statement. I have learned, I have learned, and I'm not even mentioning scooters, I have learned that when it comes to dogs and horses and possibly cats, people are more passionate about them than they are some of their own kids.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, follow-up to Councilman Cavanagh. There's a provision in the contract about termination clauses. There's a mutual agreement termination clause, but there's also a provision that another method of termination is to not fund the contract, which then requires a five-day termination. So, in theory, they could, without funding this contract fully, they could invoke the five-day termination and cease the services.
Give us a re.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
And then they refund the amount that we've already provided them?
I don't believe we've paid them more than three months. We pay them on a monthly basis. Yeah, so then we would have no services at all then.
Madam Mayor, just to point out to, actually a sidebar, we're currently on a call for service of a man that fell off a scooter and is bleeding profusely from his head, but that's another discussion. IHS has been providing the service to us for the last two months free of charge, so we would have to, in good conscience, reimburse them for the services that they've offered to us for, for free. I don't know what that calculated cost is per month, but they've been operating since October 1 without payment.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, I think we should fund this, but I also think that it should be funded by those who have animals. We're charging very little to license them. If we just did it on dogs to pay for the whole program, it'd be about $130 registration fee. I don't know that we need to be registering chickens, but maybe cats. I've never had an animal. I don't know this world. I just know that I appreciate them being handled when they're running around free, and I think that those who are letting them run around, whether it's a large, I try not to equate it with repoing cars, but that's my world, a large redemption fee, I don't know what it's called, that's what we call it, or a much larger license fee, but it needs to be a much greater subsidy to this program than what it is, if anything.
I think dog owners would say the same thing about your kids.
Madam Mayor.
Just saying.
And if the police pick up my kid, I am more than happy to pay for whatever the cost of picking up my kid was, if I wasn't the one, if I did not take the responsibility to make sure that my kid wasn't out running loose in the neighborhood without being allowed to do so.
My point is, there's a cost to enforcement, and whether it's juveniles or misbehaving adults or, or dogs. I know a lot of dog owners who would say they are their kids, and it should be covered by what they pay. This is to, to make good on our contract with the Idaho Humane Society, and separate from that is providing the service, and what is the best way to move forward, short-term and long-term. And I referred to that at our last meeting. I do, would say that they are looking at it. The cities did have a come-to-Jesus meeting with the Idaho Humane Society to, to say, we need transparency, we need a voice, we, we need better oversight, and, and they've, they've been cooperating. they've been cooperating, maybe a little slower than many of us anticipated and expected, but the cities will continue to have those conversations and we will bring you back numbers when we have them. But this is for this year's service, and it is the true cost. It's been vetted, yes.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Laura Robert.
Thank you very much for that discussion and bringing information back to us. And in the meantime, I would like to go ahead and move that we approve the Idaho Humane Society contract budget amendment not to exceed $9,528.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I, I think I'll likely support the motion, but I do think it's very troubling.
Is your microphone on?
Yes ma'am, it is.
Okay.
I can turn it off and turn it back on, just to be safe, okay. I do find it's troubling that apparently we have come to an agreement without knowing the price. And what we're essentially allowing is the Idaho Humane Society to dictate after the fact how much our price increase is going to be. And while the $9,000 seems okay on our end, what if it was, what if there was another zero added to that? Would we just roll along and say, okay, that's what it is? I'm really troubled that this organization comes to an agreement with the city and then sends us a price increase. I don't think that's how we would operate as an organization, and I find it troubling that we are in a business agreement with an organization that finds that that is an appropriate course of business. I think it has a lot more to say with how the organization is functioning when that's the type of action that they choose to take.
Mr. Cavanagh, I don't think that you get disagreement from the, the police department who oversees this or, or myself. We did ask for transparency, and through that process, they, they put numbers together that, that showed a larger cost. They had to replace several vehicles that are not in a capital improvement plan. Those were added to the cost of doing business. So, there were some unanticipated costs that they did have to wrap in, and yes, it was a surprise to all of us, but it's just like any other department coming in front of you saying, this is an unexpected cost. It is a cost of doing business and serving the citizens, and it's a cost that we have to, to pass on because their nonprofit side was not willing to absorb it. And I don't think that in the animal enforcement aspect of it, the nonprofit side should have absorbed it. But with that said, we have said they need to, to be better at their transparency and at planning for the future and having good solid numbers and meeting deadlines of each of the funding entities so we can anticipate what those costs, the true costs will be. So, I, I don't know, Chief, if you have anything you want to add, otherwise.
Madam Mayor, and I, I respect what Councilman Cavanagh has to say, I don't, I don't see that is what happening, other than the timeliness, because they, they actually could be charging us a lot more. When you look at what they're paying their people, and I've seen their figures now, and what they wanted to charge us in operating costs, they've absorbed a lot of that. The only thing you're covering is increase of the population and the call for service that we have put on them. You're not paying for anything else. If you were paying for any of, any of the other things that I think that they wanted or I think that they should be paying for, you're correct, it is, is a much higher cost. But because we put it back on them and said, you're asking me to provide you additional funds after my budget process is closed, I'm not going to do that. But I do feel obligated that, based upon the growth that we have approved as a city and the demands that we put on them for calls for service, we are responsible for that. Anything else, they, they can get timely, and they can get that in the future. Or we can look at some of them off.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, to answer your question, if, if it had a zero at the end of that, then I absolutely wouldn't have been supporting it, even if it was 20, 25,000, because then it would have been clear that we'd have been, you know, they'd have been attempting to help subsidize their puppy palace over there off Overland, which, when they came here and presented to us saying, hey, this is what we're going to come asking for in the future, I said, uh-uh, figure out a different way. And in the future, when that does come, my vote will be no, but this, given as a, as a percentage of the total contract, I feel is an appropriate change order to, I mean, everything is going insane here, we know that, and to, you know, be asking 9,500, I think is appropriate. Much more than that, be clear, they're trying to get other things funded.
Happy Palace. Okay. Mr. Clerk, you call roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Jeff. Have a nice evening. Sorry to keep you here so late.
There you go. Robert, 8C.
All right.
Update on the, the post office.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. In your packet, I put together a brief memo outlining the current status of conversations that the mayor and I have had with the United States Postal Service over the last six months. And unfortunately, at this point in time, I don't see a true path forward. I, I think it's no, we've all seen what the current financial situation, the postal service is, they are talking about a potential government bailout. I don't know if that's even an option or not, but needless to say, the postal service has no money to invest funds in new facilities. And based upon the work that they've done here in Meridian, they've found more space to make some modifications to their downtown facility where they think that they can continue to accommodate the current growth or demands for delivering services with a continued emphasis on contract models and self-service kiosks to satisfy our community. We do intend to continue to try to work with our delegation, they, they are very aware and they were engaged. If there's an opportunity for something to come up, I have every confidence that our new representative, who will be in this building, will be assisting us, we'll have a conversation with him, I think in a couple of weeks about this, but Senator Rich's office is, is leading point at this point in time on this topic for us. That being said, in our conversations with the Salt Lake City office, they, they did bring up the option of looking at adjusting our zip code boundaries. We do have certain parts of our community which we are in our area of city impact and actually have a NAPA address in the south, and areas in north which are shared with Eagle. And it was their suggestion that perhaps, and I don't know if it was just to appease us, but to perhaps go through that process of helping clean up our lines for the community and kind of establishing those boundaries. And I put the, I put the steps in there, and it really will come down to part of the conversations, the people that live in those areas, if they want to change their address. I can speak anecdotally through a few conversations we had with some of our legislators last week, that when they heard that we might be considering that, they were ecstatic about the opportunity to remove themselves of a NAPA address and get a Meridian address, just because of the problems they face from getting jury summons from the, from Canyon County, those, those type of things which occur. So, that is the recommendation at this point in time, is if we want to ask the postal service to go through and look at making some boundary adjustments, we would obviously work with community development to determine what that looks like, and then follow their steps and processes. Unless any of you have any additional comments or thoughts, that would be the direction we would move forward at this time.
Great.
I stand for any questions. We're set.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions? Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Robert, Representative Monks used to bug me every time I saw him about wanting pools in Meridian, but for the last couple of years, all it's been is he wants, he wants a Meridian address. So I'm sure that's happening with the, probably bringing back to wanting more pools, maybe we shouldn't.
I, I kind of think that was, yes, you have support from Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Support for me, certainly, for the zip code review process to be initiated, and that's off to all the work, trying to understand and weave through the maze of a post office. You know, that was brought to you, I think it came from Councilman Cavanagh, who had citizens, so this vetting process has worked well. I wish the answer was better, but at least we know. So, great work trying to get us to this point, and makes sense to utilize that opportunity for the zip code cleanup.
Well, it is unusual. We've been working on this a number of years, and I think maybe Mr. Cavanagh even worked in our office when we first started the conversations. And the post office has been doing countless, every time you mention a new post office, they do another space study, and maybe they find a couple more closets that they can turn into workspace. As Mr. Simison mentioned, it might have been just something to appease us, saying, well, you know, you could change your zip codes. And I don't know if part of that, changing your zip codes will also change carrier routes that could potentially also have a net impact on the post office in the positive. So, less impact, because they have been doing their zip codes and their carrier routes by those zip codes and locations. So, perhaps this, in some sense, could also help, I don't know, but those that we have talked to about the zip code adjustments, and I never knew that the 83646 was shared by Eagle until the last half year or year. So, and I do know that there are some CUNA residents that have a Meridian zip code as the 83642, and in some cases, a Meridian address, even though they're not in our area of impact, nor have they ever been. So, this would clean up a lot of that, and we did want to bring that back before we put time and effort into it, then to find out that you guys weren't interested, so.
And Madam Mayor, I would just, from a timing standpoint, what I would suggest is, as we work through the comp plan, and I know that there's also desire to clean up officially with Ada County, our area of city impact lines with CUNA, that we use that as we get more along those processes before we start it, that way it is officially designated, because that's some of the criteria in here, is what, what are the designated lines? And as we expect those to be changed hopefully soon or updated, that once that's done, then we could initiate this process.
And that should hopefully be part of that comprehensive plan, that we at least can start the, the groundwork today and maybe do it all in one effort. Any other comments?
Comment, thank you, Robert. Navigating the tumultuous waters of the federal government and the US postal system, and love to tell about it as a success story in itself. Appreciate the update and the continued work.
Thank you.
Okay, item 8D, under our legal department.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I provided a memo that's in your packet regarding a, a city code provision that's come up in a couple of occasions in regards to conflict of interest. And, and the concern we have from the legal department is this provision is different than the Idaho code, and the analysis is different than the Idaho code. And the concern can be, one is, one, it's not written very well. I didn't write it, so I'm not going to take any credit for it, but it, it's written in a way that's very hard to understand what they were trying to get to when this was crafted. And just to put this on the record, it says, "Whenever the performance of the official duty shall require any official or employee to deliberate and or vote on any matter involving financial or personal interest, the official or employee shall publicly disclose the nature and extent of such interest and then be disqualified from participating in the deliberation." So, by revealing your conflict, you are also automatically disqualifying yourself. The state code has a, a different nuance to it. The state code is looking first primarily at financial interests. So, the case law that exists in Idaho all surrounds the state code. There is little to nothing in cities regarding a separate conflict of interest. But secondarily, in the drafting of this provision, I don't know what was intended by personal interest, but my fair assumption is you all have a personal interest in what we're talking about. It doesn't necessarily mean you're prohibited from participating and voting in it. So, we've always focused our attention on the, the financial piece. But here, what it doesn't do, which was, which was the state code does, is the state code contemplates de minimis interest, that you may have a minimal financial interest in something, and, and the best example I can give you is, you, it's not uncommon for elected officials to own stock in certain companies, but you have no controlling interest over stock in Micron necessarily, but you may own 100 shares of Micron. Under our city code, that's a financial interest, since there is no qualification on what that means or how much interest you could have. You not only have to disqualify yourself, but the rest of the council can't weigh in as they could under the state code to say, that's de minimis, we don't believe that's a conflict, it's out on the record, it's clear what the issue is, and we, as our body, don't feel the need to exclude you. Now, again, if the individual council member's conscience prohibits them from participating, that's always their decision. They can always choose not to do that. But under our, our city code, they're essentially required to reveal it with also the requirement that they then recuse themselves when they do. It, it doesn't make much sense, and, and our concern is that, one, it's inconsistent with the state code, it certainly is one that could be potentially overlooked, and again, there's some lack of clarity in what the intentions of the words mean, that, again, a personal interest could mean nothing more than simply an interest in the outcome, not a personal advantage or a, a benefit that's being gained by an elected official specifically, but simply an interest. So, our recommendation would be to repeal the city code and follow the state code. The state code, again, has been vetted through the legislature through a number of cases over the years, and, and is trying to deal with, you know, corruption in government, trying to deal with influence peddling, trying to deal with people that have actual financial pecuniary gains to be had in elected officials' decisions. So, the, the case law exists, the, the entire reasoning exists behind it, that's already there. The Attorney General's Office offers opinions on the subject matter, but they won't offer an opinion on a city code, because again, they don't have any oversight of that. So, it's come up a few times, we would recommend repealing that, and that's why I brought it to you today.
Thank you, Bill.
Go ahead.
If, if you have any questions about that, let Bill know, if there's nothing right now.
Okay.
Don't even do anything.
Will you bring it back?
Yeah, bring it back.
Yes, please. Okay, item 8F, ICrimp Training.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Borton.
Good.
You will have our, our undivided attention.
Divided attention. I just need six minutes. If I could speak freely with the council, or this, slow your roll a little bit. Slow your roll. We got time. We've got the sign up sheet that you've all done, the training we're about to do. Well done. So, real quick, as part of ICrimp Training, annually, we do this every year, we take a couple topics. Our department, city council's being trained as you speak, as we speak. Doing this, like each other department, provides a benefit, a discount on our insurance rates to the city, so the taxpayer wins and we're all safer, which is a win-win. So, what are we talking about today? Well, I'll tell you, we're talking about distracted driving, we're talking about cell phones and driving. Those things go hand in hand. You each have a couple, a couple of information sheets here in front of you. Distracted driving and cell phones in driving. Okay, ICrimp has provided these things to educate you a little bit, maybe prompt a couple of questions, so. We all know that distractions are anything that takes your attention away from the task at hand, right? And, and Mr. Palmer, for example, if you do not give your full attention to the driving of a vehicle, bad things can happen very quickly, right? So we know that, and we know that to drive safely, you must pay full attention at all times. Treg? Mr. Burton? By doing so, that will give you enough time to react. Mr. Burton, people's lives are in your hands, including your own life.
Yes, sir.
So, don't be distracted when you're driving. When you're using your own vehicle, but you're going to city events, perhaps?
Yes.
The city can be implicated, so it is important, not only for your own safety, but...
Is that true? If I'm in my, Madam Mayor, if I'm in my own car going to a city event, I can be implicated?
I will, I'm not the legal counsel for the city, I opened a Pandora's box of...
We can talk after.
Yes.
Talk after.
That's interesting. Okay.
Not to get sidetracked. So, I guess here's a question, Genesis, really, I wanted to ask you... Not to get sidetracked. So, I guess here's a question, Genesis. Really, I wanted to ask you, what distractions do you allow in your vehicle?
I want the truth.
Do you allow any distractions?
Well, councilman, I never, ever let anything distract me from my driving, especially not food or phones or-
Music?
Friends or music. Yeah. I just avoid all of that. I never, never, ever, ever take my eyes off the road. And both hands on the wheel, ten and two.
So here's one of the, one of the, I, I appreciate that. Now, what you'll find other drivers do, this will shock you, is that they'll text, they'll dial or talk on the phone, they'll eat, drink, read. Who reads? They'll write. They might change music on a CD. Who has CDs? They might do that. Uh, or the radio station. Come on, ICrimp has to update their sheet here.
The cassette?
Or the, yeah. The eight-track, looking for things inside the vehicle. There's just so many opportunities to be unsafe, folks. So let's be safe. Let's not be distracted. Um, when we're driving the car at all times, whether you're doing city stuff or personal stuff, be attentive. Um, you know what you could do? Here's a little take-home idea. Create a list of distractions and discuss, maybe with your loved ones, your children, how those could be eliminated. That's a little, a little homework for you. So that's distracted driving, not paying attention. Let's not do that.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Did you want us to make that list on the drive home?
Great question. No, and I wasn't clear with that.
I just wanted to make sure.
Really, really clear, don't do that.
Okay.
And nor should you read this on the way home. At home, safe. Let's do that at home. So one of the items, let's wrap this up. The next part is cell phones and driving. It's one of the distractions Councilwoman Mylum does not suffer from.
Five, one in five. Can you believe?
Well, I'll just tell you that according to the National Safety Council, folks, nearly one out of every five motor vehicle crashes involve cell phones. Um, but we joke somewhat, but it's also a very serious matter. So we know, most of us have kids and spouses that we've seen struggle with that discipline necessary to not text and drive. Don't do it. One of the greatest, I'll tell you, I think one of the greatest little training tidbits is be with somebody, like a fellow council member or your spouse, and hold up your phone and start texting, like blatantly, not while you're driving, like at a stop sign, and see what happens.
Oh, it's okay. It's illegal at, it's illegal at stop signs. As long as the vehicle's not moving.
The, the, the point of doing so is to, to invite the person next to you to say something, like, hey, hey, what are you doing? What are you doing? And we're reluctant to do so with a spouse or, or a friend. Do it. If you care about somebody, tell them to knock it off. Um, they should appreciate it. Kids are the greatest training tools. So text in front of your kids, or at least pretend like you're doing it and-
Yeah, they tell me all the time. Oh.
Oh. I, I tell you that because multitasking impairs performance. Distracted driving, or, uh, drivers distracted by cellphone conversations display slower reaction times and have difficulty staying in their lane. They're less likely to see objects, visual cues, exits. When things change in their driving pattern, they can't react quickly enough. Again, our, our law enforcement seriously has seen some tragic fatalities, quite frankly, with pedestrians hit by people texting, even with good intentions, trying to pay attention. They're sending one quick text before they get home. It's not worth it. Um, so just don't do it. Take the discipline to, to not text and drive. I'm going to ask you a question, Councilman Cavanagh, to wrap this up. What percentage of time, Luke, do you talk on your cellphone while driving? Now, I'm talking, not texting.
Significant amount of time.
Significant amount.
Eighty percent of my time, hands-free, of course.
Okay. Not everyone has that luxury.
Not everyone does.
So.
Drive hands-free.
You just got to be careful when you're doing that. Just keep your eyes on the road, stay focused.
There's thirty-seven percent of your brain doing that.
Um, anyone here, last question? Anyone on council? Have you had someone that you know have a close call with a cellphone while driving? Maybe yourself, maybe a family member.
Yep.
Shove hands? Hands?
Anybody?
There we go, see? Shove a hand.
You had a close call? Known somebody had a close call with a cellphone while driving? Yourself included?
Listening, senses.
So, so that's the last takeaway, cell phones and driving. If you saw someone with a close call, that's the, the kind of the one bite of the apple. That's the reminder to say, holy cow, I might not get a second chance. So be safe with your cellphone, be safe driving and-
Wait till the red light.
Thank you for participating.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
That was important information. Okay, item eight G, election of city council officers. We will go ahead and, um, consider the office of city council president.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burns?
I, uh, like to nominate Joseph W. Borton as our council president.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Does the nominee agree?
I do.
Okay. Are, are there any other nominations?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum?
I move that, um, to nominate Luke Cavanagh as vice president.
You got everyone's heart racing there, Genesis.
We, we didn't close-
All right. I'm late, sorry.
Yeah, you're out of order.
I know. Trying to hurry and get it done.
Are, is there any other nominations for president, council president?
No, there's none.
Okay, if not, uh, we have a motion in a second to, um, nominate Joe Borton as council president. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all ayes, motion carries. Um, the office of vice president of city council. I would entertain nominations. Ms. Mylum?
You already did that.
No, I didn't.
I'm, uh, nominate Luke Cavanagh as vice president.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further nominations? Does Mr. Cavanagh accept?
I do.
Okay. There's no further nominations. We do have a motion in a second to nominate, um, Mr. Luke Cavanagh as the vice president. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, all ayes. Okay, item nine A is under ordinance nineteen dash one-eight-zero-two. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number nineteen dash one-eight-zero-two, an ordinance filed H twenty-eighteen dash zero-one-zero-five, Alteras fifteen-fifty Tech Lane, for the rezone of a parcel of land situated in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of section four, township three north, range one west, Boise, Meridian, city of Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of seven-point-two-four acres from IL, Light Industrial Zoning District, to CG, General Retail and Service Commercial Zoning District in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Okay, you've heard this read by title. Do I have a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum?
We approve ordinance number nineteen dash eighteen-zero-two, with suspension of rules.
I have a motion in a second to approve item nine A. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carrying. Um, any item under ten?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Um, I've been working with Caleb, trying to figure out a date for the next joint council P&amp;Z meeting. We've got, uh, some topics on the agenda already, so we've got a date to throw out to you. Fit into their schedule, working that way, Thursday, uh, February, Thursday, February, Thursday, Thursday, February twenty-first, sorry, um, at five o'clock. This would be before their six o'clock regular meeting, as a potential date for us to show up, do that joint meeting. Some of the topics include, uh, the comp plan update, um, opportunity zones, and, um-
What was that with?
Some general- -motion and procedure work. There'll be, there'll be new commissioners, speed at that time, so.
And Madam Mayor, just to, uh, make sure, Caleb had sent an email to the commissioners earlier today saying four o'clock on that date, instead of five o'clock, to check with their schedule. So, uh, four o'clock on Thursday, February twenty-first, I believe.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum?
We also have a joint meeting with ACHD that same day.
Yes, at noon.
How long is that one projected to last?
Uh, one-thirty, I believe, or one.
So not that long. Not long enough to get anything done.
I think it's an hour and a half. It, so that's, the, the other option, if it's not February twenty-first, I think that's the preferred date.
Oh, I can't do that.
Would be March seventh. Same idea, it'd be probably four o'clock on a Thursday, so.
I babysit.
Twenty-first is priority one, March seventh is a backup, so.
I will be gone on the seventh.
I can't do it Thursday, sorry.
On Thursday?
I have another obligation. On Thursday afternoons, after, from one on. So I could do before one.
Do it later in the evening?
Madam Mayor?
Just one person. So I don't, you know, I don't like-
Mr. Cavanagh?
I don't want to labor this meeting. I think it's important for us to meet with Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yes.
Uh, having two meetings in the same day with a very busy, full-time job schedule for myself will likely mean that one of those, if not both, may, I may not be able to attend. I think it's appropriate to move forward with that data that works for everyone, but I just want to go on record that I'm RSVPing unknown at this point in time.
Mr. Clerk, um, in talking about schedules, does it not work to do it after a city council workshop?
Madam Mayor, I, that might be a question for-
I mean, not like tonight, but-
He'd been working with Caleb.
So we'll circle back. Madam Mayor, it is an option. I think some of the initial thoughts were to try and, you know, they, they blended with our schedule, try and blend in with theirs. If it's possible, it might not be. But if it was, that was the reason that-
Madam Mayor?
We're looking at that Thursday.
Yes. Mr. Cavanagh?
I think it's important for us to, they're coming to us, I think it's important for us to try and go to their schedule, show that collaboration. Um, again, maybe as a body, we, as we get closer, we can talk. I'm, I'm happy to do everything I can to attend that. But then it also means that I'm not going to attend the ACHD meeting. Just want to make sure that we're coordinating our schedules so that we have a appropriate showing at both of those meetings.
Well, if council would take a look at the first and third Thursdays of your months and see if a four o'clock would work, is, um, Ms. Mylum, it does, no Thursdays work at all?
Not for, not after one o'clock, Madam Mayor.
Okay, if we're trying to meet on, on their turf and kind of before theirs, uh, they only meet on Thursdays. And so I, I guess, if you can just look at your work, yeah. Good luck, Joe.
We'll see. We'll get as many of us together as we can.
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Um, just a reminder to council, there, there is a grand opening for Cotton Creek, Cottonwood Creek, um, on Wednesday.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And I think it's four-thirty to six-thirty.
Or seven or something.
Four to seven.
Four to seven.
Yeah.
So, um, they had their ribbon cutting today and, um, it was very well attended. If there's, yes, Mr. Borton.
Um, you don't have to answer right now, but there's a, a doodle scheduler going around on the budget workshops, or June and July.
Already did it.
So sooner you can do it, if you haven't, please do it. Because I know Jenny's ready to go to schedule accordingly. So please take a look at your email and doodle away.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum?
I just wanted to, and I'm not doing a whole update, but on this Parks and Recreation Magazine, this is a national magazine, and on the back cover is Hillsdale Park.
Oh, cool.
Very nice and well-deserved.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing further, I would entertain a motion on item eleven to adjourn into executive session.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
We go into executive session pursuant to Idaho State Code seventy-four-two-oh-six, one A, one D, and one F.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt? Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.